So belatedly, thank you, David. Belatedly, we're going to start the meeting at 22 after the hour. This is the Planning Commission Study Session for September, or it's September, June 22nd. And I'm not going to go through the instructions on contacting. Obviously, if people are actually watching or listening to this, they have succeeded and know the instructions already. And I can't help those who are not connected. So I'd like just call to order the meeting and roll call from staff. Do we need to do that?
Commissioner Ream.
I'm here.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Olafson.
Here.
Vice Chair Simons.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Harrison.
Here.
Okay, we have six commissioners participating via teleconference with Chair Howard absent.
So we are now in the reviewing a proposed project, 32.4 acre site requesting a special development permit of three industrial properties at 932 Kafer Road, 950 Kafer Road, and yada, yada, a couple of other addresses. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is. Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the planning commission. My name is George Schroeder. I'm the project planner for a new campus proposed by Intuitive. So as you're saying, Vice Chair, these are three sites, about 32 acres on Kafer Road. And I'm going to give you some background into how this ties in with our Lawrence Station area plan updates. Just get my PowerPoint up here. I go back one slide, please. Thank you. Okay, sorry about that. So so these sites are right next to the current LSAT boundary on the western edge. So as part of our update for Lawrence Station, we're looking at including these three sites into the planned area. So back in 2018, Intuitive submitted a general plan amendment initiation. And then the council agreed to allow the study of these three sites to be part of the overall study to look at increased housing in the LSAT area. And then the council gave a couple of other directives for these sites in particular. One was to look at adding a pedestrian bicycle route with direct access to the Caltrain station. And then on the northern sites, which is a private park currently, really preserve the trees and open space as part of the development projects. Okay, so this is just a map of the three sites that we're looking at. We're grouping them into two because Intuitive is requesting a parcel map to merge the two southern sites together. So we'll refer to it as the north side, which is the private park site. And then the the south side, which includes the former Mohawk site and then a one-story office building that's currently in use by Intuitive. And then this shows that it's right on the west edge of the current boundary. I go back one slide, please. Okay, so just to give you a refresher on the LSAT, we're studying an increase of about 3,600 units in the area. And this on top of the existing, that would equate to about a little less than 6,000 total units. Not looking at residential on any of these three sites. We're also creating a new sense of place plan that would look at, you know, the the new head and bike trail and then also some new improvements such as a new median on Kafer Road. So if these three sites were to be included in the LSAT, they would be utilizing the existing balance we have in our LSAT office and R and D capacity, which was approved at 1.2 million square feet. So if this project were approved into the expanded boundary, they would be using most of that capacity, leaving about 130,000 square feet left over. This this intuitive is requesting that this sites be in the planned area so they can benefit from a higher FAR that's allowed with the LSAT. And to get to that higher FAR, the project has to be providing development incentives or committee benefits to to get to that. Okay, so this is the the overall site plan. So on the northern site, well, altogether, it's about 1.2 million square feet total. And it's on the northern sites. This is the the main office, corporate headquarters for the for the campus. And on the south side, that's more of the manufacturing and R and D space. It also includes a basement area that will be used for storage and also some minor workspaces. And then throughout the side of the campus, there'll be amenities spaces for cafeterias, other, you know, fitness areas, outdoor recreation, mainly on the north side. There's also a detached amenity space that will be part of the north area. To link the two sites together, Intuitive is proposing a pedestrian bridge over Kafer Road. That will be for employee use to get from one side to another without having to go to a crosswalk process through it via the street. Let's see, let's see if this works, but I have a, okay. Sorry. You can go back to that slide, please.
Sure, and let me know if it's if it's easier if I advance them for you.
Yes, because it's hard to do.
Okay, just just tell me, is this the one that you wanted to start on?
No, if you go back to the site plan.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so the red line shows the pedestrian bridge. And if you can click one more, please, Bonnie. So this is the, and go back. This is the the green line is location of the new class one trail for pedestrians and bicyclists. And this would link up Kafer Road and then it would go down through the bottom half of the site and then connect over eventually when the property in the east develops. And then this would link up to a recently built trail on the current intuitive headquarters site that has direct access to Snore Court and then leads directly to the station. Also want to note that a security fence is proposed around the campus for security issues. But if you see, I'll just see in the rendering, it fades into landscaping and it's an open design fence. But if we can go to the next slide, please. So tree preservation is very important for us. There's a lot of mature, healthy trees that are mainly on the north sites. There are are some of lesser significance on the southern site due to the the Mohawk. And then there's some some contamination there. But we did, just given the size of these two areas, we do two sidewalks with the the city arborist. And basically, there there's about a removal of 98 protected sized trees in the north area. And this is mainly due to, you know, the underground parking garage on that area. There are some trees that were not in great health, but the majority of the the kind of the extravagant redwood groves are going to be remaining in place. And then for those trees removed, there'll be new ones to offset the loss. On the south side, there there are more tree removals. And this is mainly because of the the coverage of the new building. But, you know, the the more, these are trees that, you know, conflict with the proposed project. And then new trees will be offsetting the loss. Go to the next slide, please. This is just a rendering of the north building night view. It's a very modern architectural style and the project team will be describing this more in detail. But as you can see, there is a fence that's that's probably visible. But this is kind of the view when the landscaping is in. Has, you know, modern materials like wood, wood softits underneath the roofs, precast concrete, glazing, really to break up the the overall size with building offsets. And if you can go to the next slide. This is the view from from Kafer Road on the south building. And there's a a couple of design iterations that the the project design team will will go through for the the commission's consideration. But overall staff is pleased with the direction of the of the overall project. They've been working with us on enhancements. And so this is a good time to show it to the the commission. You know, it's the next slide, please. So this this is a view of the parking structure. And this is also, there's also some work that's in progress. But, you know, staff is looking at opportunities to help, you know, break up the the long ends of the building in particular. So a recent update was to add these these stairwell towers to provide these visual breaks. The app can also looking into the possibility of of public art on the facade. But on the front, there are some large insets that help to break up the massing of the front. Next slide, please. So overall, staff believe that this project is consistent with the the vision of the LSAT. Should it be, or should these sites be part of the plan? Number one, it'd be a main employment center within close proximity to transit. It would facilitate the growth of a existing businesses headquartered in Sunnyvale and particularly has a large presence in the Lawrence Station area plan. It would preserve lots of open space and existing trees. The city would benefit from this new trail to Lawrence Station. And Intuitive is also working with staff on the particulars of the incentives they're being proposed. They could could include, you know, some of the sense of place improvements, like building out of the median and by their frontage, could be recycled waterline, bus stop improvements. Those are still being worked out with staff. But we're confident that they'll be beating the criteria of the development incentive program to get their proposed FAR. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Very good. I wonder if we have anybody from the applicant.
Commissioner Simons, if I could just interrupt and let you know that it seems as though the YouTube feed is now working.
All right. So welcome those on watching on YouTube. Back to the applicant, who's going to be speaking?
Bonnie.
Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah. If you could load applicant presentation.
Yes, just one moment.
Quick question, how long is it?
It's about nine minutes.
Okay. We do want to have some time for, you you really do want to have time for planning commissioner comments, just to kind of warn you.
George included some of the elements. We'll try to, yet we do want the comments feedback absolutely. So that will turn it over to Blake. Blake, go ahead.
Great, thanks, Eric. Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Blake Reinhardt. I'm Vice President of Construction for Intuitive. First, I'd like to just say that I hope that the planning commission and professional staff and and those tuning in tonight are are both safe and well during these uncertain times. Wish the Chair Howard all the best. And he's not here this evening. And I just want to say thank you very much for for hosting the study session this evening as well. As as you know, Intuitive is a globally, a global technology leader in minimally invasive robotic assisted surgery. And last year surgeons used our system, our DaVinci system, to perform more than a million procedures across the globe. And with more than 7,000 employees worldwide and and roughly 3,500 people employed here in Sunnyvale, we're proud to call Sunnyvale our home and our headquarters. And we're also proud to contribute to the economic vitality of Sunnyvale and employ a diverse workforce, including administrative office functions, research and development, many different engineering disciplines, IT professionals, logistics, repair, and assembly workers that put together our systems and our instruments and accessories for our robots. And it's all done right here in Sunnyvale. And, you know, we focus on assembly of our robots and testing and other operations that are clean in nature. And it's not a fab, it's not a chip manufacturing facility, it's not a traditional manufacturing process. It's an assembly. The new campus would allow us to remain in Sunnyvale, establish our new corporate headquarters and build a state of the art R and D and manufacturing space for our company. As a our unified approach west of Lawrence creates a campus-like environment. And as as for those of you who know, we have a lot of different properties on either side of Lawrence and and workers really have to cross Lawrence to 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 get from one meeting to another. And so this really allows us to have a unified campus that'll allow us to collaborate and innovate for many generations of of technology to come. So it's just really excited about it. So I'd like to, if we could, let's see, just talk about the existing site here for a moment and some background on the property. And then I'll hand it off to to the Foster and Partners team, who will walk through the design features of the architecture. So our 950 Kafer project, which is a property which is on on the south side of Kafer, the current buildings on the site include 950 Kafer that's that's served as the our shipping and receiving facility and support of our DaVinci robot repair center, as well as warehouse and and office operations. And then next to it, just to the west of the existing, and I'm, of course, I don't have the, can't really mark on here. But Eric, do you have the ability, or I'm not sure who's controlling, but just pointing where 930 is, 932 is?
Yes.
Just to the left, the the left side of our of our southern parcel.
So Eric, you have control.
Got it.
Yeah. You can just hover over the 932 and the 950.
Can you see that?
No.
It's not coming through.
Like, does that five the 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 addresses that are there?
Yeah, so it's. So we'll just just noting the addresses. So 932 is the western, is the westernmost portion of the southern parcel. And and that was the the former Mohawk Chemical Manufacturing Plant for decades, including heavy, there's a heavy rail spur that once brought chemicals to the site, to and from the site. And so prior to our ownership, Mohawk started a a cleanup of the site and it's and all its chemical operations and has been remediating the site for years. And so the site's now in a monitoring phase as part of our new campus. We'll reclaim that site and 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 all the completion of the soil cleanup will happen. And and it's a renewal of the property. And we really are excited about having a a new use for a property that really is not, it's it's just not being used right now. So and so then the night to the north is our 945. It's actually two parcels. It's a small parcel, 955, and then our larger parcel, 945. And those will get merged into a single parcel. And intuitive, that that's the the home of the current private recreation area and the and some large surface, large surface parking lot. And we've decided to locate our our northern building there. And our our administrative office is there in the what is majority existing parking area. But the interesting thing is that we've really, we've we've gone to a tremendous amount of of time and and expense to to design the building so that it it works in between the redwood groves, the existing redwood groves. And so when you see the footprint of the building, you'll see it's just, it's a, it works, it works well and allows us to do that beautifully. So and preserve the vast majority of the park-like setting. And so what I'd like to do is introduce you to the Foster and Partners team. We've engaged them as one of the leading architects and design firms in the world to help us realize our vision for an innovative campus and world-class architecture and and one that that has environmental sustainability as a first principle. And so let me introduce Ben Dobbin with Foster and Partners, and he'll walk you through, we'll walk you through it.
Welcome, Ben.
Thanks, Blake. So what we're looking at now, this is the site plan showing the north building, south building, and the parking garage down at the southwest corner there. The north building will be the new corporate headquarters for Intuitive, including about 364,000 square feet of office space over three floors with the basement parking and then some employee recreation areas. As Blake mentioned, we've carefully located the building primarily in the open parking lot and the open field, so as to preserve as many of those trees as possible. And that allows us to retain and improve the park experience. And what we've done, we've worked very hard to be able to get all of that park, well, most of the parking underground. And as you can see, there's that central grove of trees which runs just north of Kafer. We've actually shaped the building to step around that grove of redwoods to create a like an entry courtyard. And those redwood trees, which are quite considerable, actually become the the centerpiece of that architectural setting as you arrive at this new headquarters camp of the campus. As Blake said, the the south building will be a combination of research and development and a new state-of-the-art space for assembly of these DaVinci robots. Assembly will occur mainly on the on the first floor with R and D layered up on the second and third floors. This building's about 847,000 square feet and about three stories with the basement below that. And parking is housed in the garage at the west of the site. Switching now to the sort of the landscape plan, this shows the overall preserved and enhanced park area. So what we're going to do, there's an existing amphitheater and there's an existing shading structure which we're going to restore and use. And then we'll be implementing, incorporating new employee amenities such as the soccer field, basketball and volleyball courts, bike parking, jogging trails, and some outdoor employee dining areas. And lastly, a multi-purpose building to serve those amenities with showers and lockers. On the south side, we've created generous planting area, the public and private realm along Kafer Road. This diagram just shows the the vehicular circulation for both employees and visitors to arrive to the sites. And this one just shows the bike and pedestrian paths along Kafer and of course, the bike trail leading towards Lawrence Station. Talking about the design concept, it's important to note this is not a typical office building project. This is, we're designing an assembly building where Intuitive has very specific requirements in terms of the building size and the configuration for its assembly line, its operations and R and D functions. And this thought led us to some of the most iconic historical industrial building styles, which we updated with 21st century architectural elements to suit the new building's function. They're characterized by rhythmic repetitive glazing, sort of generous floor heights, tall floor to ceiling, natural light coming into the space. And we've adopted those principles and sort of reapplied them to the building which we're doing today. So we can walk you through a few of these perspectives. So can you go back one slide? So this is a view of the south building, standing on Kafer Road, looking east. We worked hard with your professional staff, Andy and George, to really articulate further the Kafer Road, creating significant breaks in the in that frontage, more more depth, more relief. So it reads as a series of buildings and not one just building along along that frontage. And then going to the the east facade, or sorry, this is the west facade. They also can, we've been asked to look at the refinement of these eastern west facades of the south building, the garage. So we wanted to share this close-up view. These are evolutions, they're work in progress, not fully rendered out. But one of the thoughts we had is to shorten the, look at shortening the canopy projection at the top. And and look at how we could break it up further. So next slide is the the design implementation. What we've done is we've reorganized the internal configuration of the building. We've actually brought the circulation to the exterior of the building. Incorporated these staircases in this location. We've increased the projection from the facade of these core elements. And we've introduced glass to, in that facade, to actually show the interest and activity. And we've also shortened the projecting canopy. And we've sort of done some more variation in that roof line to actually create a bit more visual interest. And then this is a a view of the Alvis Cafe, which we did in Cupertino, where we used a fluted glass, it's a textured glass. And it creates a kind of veiled appearance with the staircase behind it. It creates an interesting look by day and also by night. And here's another view of the of the south, south building, looking directly on from Kafer Road. And you get a clear sense of what we've done here to create those deep recesses, the big cuts in the canopy edge, and planting in between. And you can see really, you can barely see the fence which George mentioned earlier. Everything is working in a blended experience between the public and the private world. Here's a view showing the pedestrian bridge is there to connect and unify the north and south buildings across Kafer Road. It's an early sketch, but we wanted to give you a sense of that scale and design thinking. Here's a view looking west on Kafer. This is looking towards the the parking garage on the south side. As George mentioned, we're going to look to create a portion of that north, north-facing facade as a location for public art. And that's something we're going to develop. The staff have asked us to provide more in-depth, closer view of this parking structure. So what you're going to see is kind of work in progress. This is what we've previously submitted. And it's sort of perforated facade of glass or maybe metal materials vertically spaced around to create this veil and shield the views of the cars behind us. And our evolution of this is to think about bringing out the circulation again and express that on the on the east facade. We think there's a very nice correlation between what's happening there and then that facade which we just looked at earlier on the south building. And there's two circulation cores actually speaking to each other and animating what's happening in that space. And the other thing we've done is we've varied the spacing of those vertical elements along the facade. Here's the, sorry. And this is the north building where we've continuing the same architecture to create a unifying concept of one architecture for these two sites, which gives the identity to Intuitive. And with that, I'll sort of wrap this up and hand it back over to Blake.
Great, well, thanks, Ben. So let's see. I guess before I wrap up, just wanted a a note on sustainability. You know, the buildings will be highly sustainable, including lead gold as 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 the city is, the city, as part of the city requirement. But in addition to that, you know, we're we're planning on, you know, an all, an all-electric building, not natural gas, photovoltaics on on every inch of the roof that we of the roof that we can possibly fit them. Electric car charging stations, thermo, thermal energy storage system and other sustainability measures. And we're also planning to bring recycled water potentially to the site, as George mentioned earlier. And we'll continue our robust TDM program. I'd like to just take a moment and thank the professional staff for, for the coordination and collaboration with Intuitive over the, over the duration that we've been working together. And, and we're excited about the LSAP plan and Foster's world-class design and our project moving forward. Really appreciate your time this evening and look forward to your feedback and our continued partnership and collaboration with you and the city. And we're happy to answer any questions.
So let's, let's go directly to the commissioners. And it's just the windows on my screen. So I'm going to go with my first one on the left, which is Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have two questions and a comment. One of the things in the staff report was that there was 98 protected trees in the north and 143 trees in the south that were going to be removed. It didn't say what percentage of trees or anything like that. Are you removing them all or is this 10%? What's an approximate number so that we would know what the inventory of protected trees are there as well as how many are actually going to be removed?
So on the north side, we're, we're actually retaining 84% of the existing redwood trees on the site. And overall, we're able to retain across the two sites 81% of the, of the existing redwood tree. So I, we have worked extremely hard to preserve as many trees as possible all the way through it.
Thank you very much. We had another project that came before the planning commission at, I believe, Iowa and Matilda and had a similar type of roof on it. And they had no protection from the water running off of those roofs. What, what type of protection do you have? It was going to dump roof water straight onto a public sidewalk.
Oh, no. So we will be, we'll be draining back to internal drains within the, within the gussets, within the core of the building.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say that both the staff and the applicant has done a wonderful job putting together an entire project that's coordinated in such a way that it actually works. And it has a lot of benefits for that Caltrain station and people that live in the city of Sunnyvale. So thank you very much. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Reum.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Thanks for your presentation. I, I really like this project. Where it is by Lawrence Station, I'm really impressed by the fact that we're saving this park and the fact that you guys are building around these redwood trees, which are just, you know, majestic and, and, you know, that's art in itself. I think it's wonderful. I really like the, I, I love how you also took into, into your design where you looked to, you know, sort of the past and based your design on, on the, you know what I'm saying, from the past, which I, I really think it's a beautiful design. I love the roof lines. Thank God we don't have another flat roof. I, a couple of things that I would suggest. I'd love to see that roof, that roof sort of working its way over that, the walkway across Kafer, sort of implementing that design sort of, sort of in the, that walkway over Kafer would be nice. The other thing, yeah, maybe the garages need a little bit of work. I, I would say too that it would be nice if we used trees that grow much taller that would sort of correlate nicer against that, those really tall parking garages. So it just kind of softens the, the height of those.
Are you done? Okay, I'm assuming Commissioner Reum is finished. I can't hear him. We've, we'll come back to him if it needs to be. Commissioner Weiss, do you have comments?
Yes, thank you. My first comment is how much I like the roof lines of the north and south building. I don't know how you describe it. It looks like it's a cross between a butterfly roof and a barrel vault. Reminds me of a nun's temple. It's wonderful. But I have a problem with the garage, the parking structure next to it because it seems so stock and geometric right alongside of this more graceful building that some of the harshness or, I don't know, brutalism, um, in my opinion, it needs to be softened. If we're somewhere else, it wouldn't be such a sharp contrast. But if it's part of the campus and it's connected to the other buildings, public art isn't going to do it. It, it needs some other kind of geometry than just the angles. But the rest of the campus is, is a gem. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Olafson.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm, just have to start by saying I'm very pleased that Sunnyvale is still an attractive place for you to expand your business. The latest iteration of the south building west facade, I really like. I like that you've brought out the, you put in more glass and that the, the southern part of the building has a slightly different look than the, the park facing Kafer. So I, I think that's clearly in the right direction. The, all of the buildings, both north and south facing Kafer, are very attractive. And as Commissioner Reum said, not having a flat roof is going to really add to the, the ambiance of the area. I do like that you've worked very diligently with your neighbors in the last couple of years of projects coming before the commission that have shown you're, you're trying to integrate very well. I would like to comment on the parking garages, as other commissioners have. We have asked other applicants that when they can, could you look to somehow integrate the walls so they look more like the, the two buildings you're going to have people in, rather than a rectangular box with a, a roof of solar panels? But if you could, I like the last one where you, you put the exterior walk-ups on it. But I would like to see something on the, the main structure that better looks like the other two buildings, just so there's more of an integrated flow all along Kafer. Other than that, I like what you're doing. Very much appreciate that you're, you're working with the city to increase the LSAP area and looking forward to seeing this project completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you. So George or Andy, can you tell me why the boundary of the LSAP was originally where, where it was? And I, I understand that we'll use up the quote "development reserve" of the non-residential space by increasing this area. But are there any other effects that increasing the boundary will have?
So you, I know you remember well, having been on the, the committee, that we drew a half-mile radius around the station itself. And, and that's how we, and then we excluded some of the existing residential neighborhoods and just really dealt on the opportunity sites. And that's how we came up with this, the configuration. Subsequently, as George could give more details on, in, as we began to look at revising the plan to allow for additional housing, we were also at the same time in conversations with Intuitive on this plan of what they had intended to do. And we thought it made sense to go ahead and the council, you looked at it and the council gave us the go-ahead to, to consider that as a general plan initiation to revise the specific plan. That it made some sense to, if you're going to have intuitive, several intuitive buildings in a row down Kafer, to capture all that so everything falls under one set of guidelines, one set of standards, what you're trying to accomplish from a, from a pedestrian and bike standpoint, et cetera, look at it as a whole. Even though it's further than a half a mile, it still will function as if, because there's one large campus there at the end, it functions as one larger bit. And then the property across the street, the park site, was good to have that be included so that we can also try to have some standards in it that help protect a lot of those trees. So it wasn't left on its own. And maybe at some point in time, annexed going the other direction towards commercial by a different user. So that's kind of the background of how we came up with this. But as you know, we'll be coming back to you with the actual update to the specific plan. And the final action you'll give at that point will be whether or not to expand the boundary. So that hasn't been finally completed yet.
Okay, good. My next sort of general question about how it integrates with the LSAP plan is, I, I know that having streets that connect, it seems like there's a division between parcels opposite the south building. And I didn't remember whether or not that was one of the proposed transportation loops that connected to Central and Off Loop, and whether or not this precludes that from happening in the future.
So I, I think you mean, you mean the north property. I think it coming, an access point off of Central Expressway. And as, as Intuitive knows, I've asked several times about whether or not there's any opportunity to, to bring maybe another off-ramp or move the off-ramp that goes to Texas Instruments to have it go down the property between basically Santa Clara and Sunnyvale along the east side of the, their northern building. And they've, they have given it an off, a real honest shot. I'm convinced of that. It's not a done deal that it can't happen, but there are so many constraints and so many issues, mainly in that the existing owner has no interest in, in relocating that existing drive. You can't have both. They have one little driveway that leads in from Central Expressway. So you can't have both. So it has to be, had to be relocated. And there's many conflicts. But I still hold out hope that that could be something that could be useful. Maybe you can take a pretty good chunk of cars off of Central and not have to deal with Lawrence Expressway or Commercial and that can get it into a different area. But we also don't even know if the county has an interest in doing that or not. So we'll keep looking at that. I just don't know where that's going to end up.
Okay, thanks. And then, um, those were my two general questions. But I had a specific question is the walkway as planned, is that open air or is that conditioned?
Are you referring to the bridge?
The bridge, yes.
It'll be open air.
Okay. And I think that's, oh, my next question has to do with, it seems that the number of replaced trees is equal to the number of removed trees. Typically, we see that the number of replaced trees is two or three times the number of removed trees.
In this case, I think with, with the north side, we also have a lot of trees already there. I mean, so there's a huge number of trees on that side. On the south side, yeah, we're, we're matching what we're removing. So, yes, that's all.
Right. And then with the larger box size replacements, those can be, to be done on a one, one-for-one ratio. And I think some of the other numbers were just the total trees. Not all the tree removals are protected trees that require the replacements. So there is a little bit more than a one, one-for-one. But those trees that are at a one-for-one, they have to be like a larger box size, like 36 or 48.
Okay, great. And then as far as comments go, I, I really appreciate so many things. Other commissioners have mentioned the roofs and the architecture and the throwback to historical production buildings. But I also appreciate that you're keeping the amenities like the amphitheater, that you are completing the cleanup of the Mohawk property. I like the, seeing the stairs on the west side of the south building. But I'm wondering whether or not that's going to create a lot of extra heat with, with the roof overhang not, not actually providing shading to that plane. So I have that as a, I like it, but I have a question about it. That's it. I, it looks gorgeous, honestly.
Commissioner Harrison, I, I just want to share something that I heard from a different applicant for a project is that there's this thinking nowadays, and I'm sure this is what Foster's was thinking as well, it helps towards this, that if you, if you have the stairs open up, visible light lit so you can see out, it actually encourages people to use them more and, and rely less on stairs. And by doing what they're doing, it actually makes the stairway more attractive for people than maybe it isn't, you know, it's not an eight-story building. It's a four-story building, four, three-story building. Anyway, it, it does give you more possibility people to use the stairs instead of an elevator.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Now on to my comments. Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. One of the things that was interesting to me with your presentation about your inspiration buildings, many of them were Deco-inspired. I don't see that this is Deco at all, but boy, I would really like to see a Deco building, a Deco architecture in the city at some point in the future. One of the things I would, I'm asking staff and the applicant to do for the public hearing, and that would be, I'd like to see the picture views on the south set of buildings, that's the new buildings as well as the parking garage, from the perspective of Caltrains and seeing what that's going to look or the bicycle trail on the south side. One of the things that I'm very concerned with is the look all the way around. And one of the things that is very noticeable is when you go to cities that have considered the Caltrains perspective is very unimportant to be, have architectural elements. They look really crappy as you're flowing through them. And the ones that are really, you know, give just as much attention to the street sides, to the Caltrain sides, it makes the city a whole lot nicer. And I think it benefits the users of the local Lawrence Station. So I'd like to see those added in.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Simms, I just want to let you know, I totally agree with you. And that's been a direction we've been giving applicants is we don't want to see the back end of these buildings be along the train. The train line needs to be done just as, just as tastefully and carefully. And I think they've done a good job with that. And by the way, they've also met with the property owners of the townhomes and the condos on the other side of the train tracks. They've had some concerns about noise because the train doesn't run 24 hours. And they've, they've actually had quite a few meetings with them to let them see what the design is and to listen to some of their concerns. But I couldn't agree with you more. I see that, that we need four-sided architecture in the city, especially along both the train and car, car routes.
And the only reason I brought it up was I only saw the, the sides and the front. So I just wanted to make sure that we'll, we'll see what that looks like on the south side. Then it's a recommendation. I'm noticing that in the diagram of pedestrian and bicycle routes, that you've got a, you've got a section right here, a commercial, commercial avenue coming down from Central. And the access points to the bicycle trail are not accessible from the other sides of the street. And when bicyclists are coming in from one direction or another, I'm almost wondering, I'm, I'm kind of requesting staff and the applicant to work this out. But either I'm looking for people who are coming in from Commercial and Central, that will be a bicycle route as people go out to Central to do long distance, go to Palo Alto, go to Santa Clara, San Jose. But when they're coming down, down Commercial, the most convenient way to get into this trail is either going straight through or that there would be an access point through the guest parking to, to here. And I think that's one or the other. I prefer the straight through to the, to the, to the outer bicycle parking circularatory route that's on the periphery. The other thing is, I would like to know in the public hearing about the connectivity between 950 and 932. I'm, I'm kind of expecting that there will be because it's the same company. I would hope that if people are moving things, they're not going to have to go out onto Kafer just to get back into the next parking lot. The other thing is, is that I'm comfortable with the shortening of the projections, the eaves. But I really do like large eaves. But I really do like large eaves on different buildings. I think that's a nice architectural element in general. Next thing, the native species, I'm expecting this is going to be something that I kind of bring up on a regular basis, but when I'm thinking of plantings, new plantings, I'm looking for native large species, trees to be planted that are going to give the height, the, the fast growth that people keep talking about. And I also think that the garage needs to be better integrated with the rest of the architecture of the, of the project. And I, I don't really know what the answer would be to do it, but it, it could be a combination of different forms to mimic or also maybe some of the colors are quite different. It's very contrasty for the garage and more geometric was described. I don't know if that's the right term for it, but it's, it's, it's a little bit less warm than, than the rest of the office buildings. And so that's the end of my comments. Staff, do we have any public comments to the study? In the study session?
We don't have anything to share or read into the record, but now would be a good time to open it up to the public, the attendees as part of the meeting.
Sure. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment either off of the phone? That's a star nine to flag your name to the staff or I not so sure what else is available. So.
They can use the raise your hand feature.
Sure, on Zoom. And is there anybody yet?
Doesn't look like anyone.
Okay, we are running actually kind of early. We started twenty five minutes late. We are just coming up on fifteen minutes after the hour. I would like to thank the applicant for the, their time and the commissioners' comments and the staff work on this project. And since we're a little bit late, unless there's, somebody wants to speak up, I'd like to end the study session so that we can initiate the public hearing. And with that silence, I will say thank you, everybody. And that's the end of the study session for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. For everyone who is not participating in the public hearing, if you could disconnect from the call so that we can add more panelists for the public hearing portion.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. So staff, do I just kick off and start the public hearing?
No, we might need to check in with the planners here to make sure that.
Let me know.
All of their applicants are online.
Sure.
So I think, I think the first item, the applicant is online, that's the mayor. Second item, we have two items that are in consent. I know that the city staff that would be present if that were to be pulled and discussed are online. I don't know yet if the design review for the single family house is, are present, so I'll find out about that.
Okay. We're still waiting for Cindy. I don't see her.
I'll message her right now.
Okay.
Bonnie, is that something we could go ahead and start and do the the mayor's item first and then see if we can, if they're on? Okay.
We could move it to the end.
Yeah, I sat through most of the, the, the B pack.
When did you leave? I stuck it out. Okay.
I had, I had a seven AM meeting the next morning. I wasn't going to stay there until.
You know, there are other people who had early, early starts in the next day. And I was just thinking, ah, they're all getting prepared to join the planning.
We can wait for everyone to join after the mayor's item.
Yeah, why don't we do that? So welcome, everybody, to the June twenty second, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting. And I would like to, I guess there's some things we do have to do, bookkeeping, like, so I guess it's the we do have to do the roll call and then we'll go directly to the presentation from the mayor. So staff, do we have a roll call for?
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Present.
Commissioner Howe?
Present.
Commissioner Olivson?
Present.
Commissioner Ream?
Present.
Commissioner Weiss?
Present.
Vice Chair Simons?
Present.
We have six commissioners present via teleconference, Chair Howard absent.
Sure. Thank you very much. And yeah, go for it.
Oh, that's, oh, you're welcome. No, I'm a doctor, I'm a mayor.
No, you're the doctor.
Both the applicants for the, the consent items are available as well. So if you want to continue on through, we can do that.
I'd like to just go directly to the presentation and if the mayor's still with us and we haven't delayed him too long.
Sure. Are you ready?
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. You know, I wish I could have done this face to face at an annual boards and commissions recognition event, but you know, we restarted that last year and hopefully next year we will have it again. But we live in a shelter in place world now. And things have changed quite a bit as we do our remote meetings. So these congratulations will have to be, of course, from a safe social distance. Of course, I'm a big advocate for the Planning Commission, spending time on the commission with most of you and some of you more than others, vice chair. And I, I just want to, I and the rest of council want to, want to basically appreciate the tremendous job that this commission does on a daily basis, you know? I, I love sitting through the study session tonight and hearing the questions and, you know, it reminded me of my nine years on, on the commission. A lot of decisions are left in your hands and I really, really appreciate that hard work and I feel that it is in good hands. So tonight, though, I'm, I'm here to thank two members in particular. First Chair Howard, who can't be here this evening, completed Councilmember Melton's partial term. And we just reappointed him for another four years. And I just want to thank him and I'll, when I see him next, I'll definitely thank him. And Commissioner Howe, former mayor, completed my partial term and he was also reappointed for four years to the commission. So for Commissioner, Commissioner Howe and Chair Howard, you know, I want to thank you both. And I want to thank all of you for, for your continued hard work on this very important commission. You know, you represent city, you represent the residents, you represent the, the developers and trying to come up with the best solutions and working with city staff to, to craft a final, craft a final design that's, that's best for the city now and in the far future. So, you know, as always, feel free to reach out to me or any of the council members if you have any questions, any concerns. But, you know, I just want to say thank you. I look forward to seeing you all face to face, hopefully sometime soon. But thanks for having me here tonight. And, you know, thanks for all that you do. It's, it's really appreciated. You know, sincerely, you know, and thank, thanks for having me. I, I really, I really love this commission and, you know, I don't, I don't get to see you as much as I can because of certain, you know, certain issues with, with the Brown Act and, and all that. That being said, I do tune into the, the commission meetings every now and then. And I do appreciate that you now start a little bit earlier than you did when, when I was on the commission. So, so with that, I'll leave, leave you to it this evening. I don't want to derail your meeting much, but, but thank you very much and thanks for having me.
Thank you, Mayor. So hopefully didn't keep you too late. But I'm glad you enjoyed the study session. They're just so, you know, it's a secret in the city. What a wonderful thing. The planning commission study sessions are so.
Vice Chair, if I, Vice Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the kind words. I appreciate it on behalf of yourself and the city council. And I'd like to say that I'm very honored to have been reappointed to the Planning Commission for another term. Thank you all.
Thank you, John. Take care.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're on to more business. Not that you're not important, Mayor, but just decided that it's important to get to on to the consent calendar. So we have a number of items on the consent calendar. Do we have either something being pulled or do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Chair Simons, before you hand, it may inform your decision. You, we did forward to you two different letters or emails about one of the items. And we did four of those to you, so they're available for you. If you feel it's necessary to read those into the record, we can do that.
They're all about the Civic Center modernization project, correct?
Correct, correct.
Were those late afternoon or? I'm kind of thinking, did I catch them?
I think they were later in the afternoon.
I don't know if I caught them. Maybe I was just chatting with you guys too much before the meeting and didn't check my mail. Were they in support or requesting modifications? Or just what were the, what was the?
I would not see either. I did not see any.
Yeah, I haven't seen them.
Okay, so we can read those into the record if you'd like to do it now before the items that you could hear to see if there's any interest you have in pulling item. Maybe that would be the best approach. Rebecca, what do you think?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So Bonnie, are you available, able to read the, the two emails received and put them into the record? Otherwise I'll find them.
Yes, definitely. Should I give them the normal three minutes?
No, I'm sorry. Just read into the record, the two emails that we received that we forwarded to the Planning Commission.
Okay, sure. So the first one comes from Mary Brunkhorst. It reads, I am concerned about the addendum to the Civic Center Environmental Impact Report. There does not seem to have been much public review of the plans to increase the size of the Civic Center Modernization Project and remove more protective trees. I encourage the Planning Commission to put a stop to any changes until the community is able to meet and discuss this important issue. Thank you, Mary Brunkhorst. The second one.
Sorry, commissioners, could you hear all of Bonnie's? Were you, would you like?
I heard it. I heard it. But I don't know about anybody else.
Okay.
Okay. Let me find the second one here.
The second is from Mei Ling Stefan.
Okay, the other one reads, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay. The other one reads, dear Planning Commissioners, there should be a pause to rethink the project. The natural ventilation for the new city hall building counts on a cooler microclimate created by nearby trees in the summer. Removing more trees is not a good idea. Is reliance on the redwood grove sufficient? What if the redwood trees die of disease? We need a forest of trees of different varieties to provide greater resilience. The extensive underground parking interferes with growing more trees. Shelter in place necessitated by COVID nineteen has shown that telecommuting and virtual meetings on a grand scale works and a majority of workers surveyed would like to telecommute for part of the week, even when normalcy returns. Traffic congestion will likely become even worse than pre-COVID nineteen days as many previous transit units will prefer, will prefer driving. Requiring more telecommuting in the new normalcy will solve multiple problems. Perfecting online service and public meetings will also be much appreciated by residents. Surely, traffic reduction ought to be far greater than the eleven percent that is planned. Even the ten percent building expansion should be reexamined. Why not have more outdoor workspace and meeting space for staff under the shade of trees? We all know that aerosols created by breathing and talking can disperse better outdoors than indoors. I have found it ironical that diesel generators are planned and not batteries or fuel cells. This is the time to ask, is the plan outdated? Sincerely, Mei Ling Stefan. And she provides four notes that are links that look like two articles related to this topic. And that's the second of the two that we've received.
Thank you very much. Since we've read those in, I'm assuming we are right into item two A. And do we have any comments from Planning Commission? And then do we, staff, do we go?
Can we just clarify or is someone pulling that from the consent calendar?
Oh, I thought we did by reading those in.
Vice Chair. I would like to address item two A separately from item two B.
Accepted. So, yeah.
If it's acceptable to you, I move the balance of the consent calendar, which is item two B.
Very good. Do we hear, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Ream. Staff, unless there's a comment or make some changes for the project. Is there any other comments to your motion?
There's no comments to, to be.
Very good. Commissioner Ream?
No, no comments.
Okay, staff, if you could call the vote.
Commissioner Ream?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Vice Chair Simons?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
And Commissioner Olivson? I'm sorry, Commissioner Olivson, can you repeat that? I didn't hear your vote.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion to pass item two B passes, six yeses with Chair Howard absence.
So we're on to item two A. Staff, is there a report?
I believe that Allison Boyer from the Department of Public Works will give a presentation for you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Bonnie, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the PowerPoint.
Yes, one more please.
Thank you. All right. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
So, let's see. Bonnie, it doesn't look like I have control. Oh, there we go. So, item two A is the Civic Center Phase One recommendation to up, to amend, I'm sorry, to add an addendum to the Civic Center EIR. So a couple items. Maybe.
Oh, John, can you put your hand down?
So the agenda, I've got some background information on the project, the sequel requirements, and then what is in the EIR for addendum changes. So just a little background on the project. This all started back in May twenty seventeen. The master plan concept was awarded to Smith Group. And then in November twenty seventeen, option one, which is the option that kept Olive Avenue open with the plaza was selected as the preferred alternative. September tenth, twenty eighteen, Planning Commission adopted a resolution to certify the project environmental impact report. And then on September twenty fifth, twenty eighteen, council approved the master plan and the he, project environmental impact report and directed staff to proceed with phase one of design. So a quick reminder of what master plan includes. It has a new city hall with four stories and an underground garage, a new public safety headquarters and a new library surrounding a plaza along Olive. So this was the master plan that was approved. Just another rendering here showing that. And then phase one is what staff was directed to proceed with. Phase one includes a new city hall building as well as a renovation to the existing public safety building, a new emergency operations center or EOC, as well as the demolition of the existing city hall annexes and the SOC, the Sunnyvale complex. So the green is the new build, orange is the demo, and then that blue is the tenant improvements for the public safety building. So here it is with, with the landscape shown. It shows the Redwood Grove Amphitheater there along All American and Olive Corner. It shows the new city hall, the plaza, and then the passive landscape that's going to go in where the SOC currently is. So that's all what happened since you guys saw it. Now, what, what have we been doing? So in February of 2019, the potential for building growth based on staff increases was discussed at the city council strategic planning session. And then in August 27th, 2019, council approved the schematic design and a updated budget based on staff recommendations and directed staff to prepare an addendum to the EIR. So here's the, the legal background. If a project is revised after the certification of an EIR, the agency must evaluate the potential environmental impacts. A subsequent or supplemental EIR is required if the project substantially changes, requires major revisions to the EIR due to the involvement of new significant environmental impacts, a substantial increase to the severity of the previously identified significant effects. If only minor technical changes to the project that are not substantial enough to trigger a subsequent or supplemental EIR, the agency might, may prepare an addendum to the EIR. After evaluating the potential environmental impacts of the proposed changes to the Civic Center projects, staff determined that the subsequent or supplemental EIR is not required. Therefore, we prepared an addendum. Just some notes, the addendum does not need to be circulated for public review. An addendum is not certified or adopted, but becomes part of the previously adopted EIR. So I split this into three categories. You've got the city hall, the EOC changes, and then the site changes. So what has changed since the last EIR? The building size has increased 10%. It's gone from 109 square feet to 120 square feet, plus or minus. We've taken a 20% reduction in the city hall parking garage. We've gone from 110 to 89 stalls. And the city hall, city hall generator has been up, upsized from 440 kilowatts to 1,000 kilowatt generator. That is to help with redundancy in in unfortunate events if we were into a, where the city hall loses power. So here's the most current update of the city hall from the North Plaza. You'll see we still have our PV arrays as well as the treehouse effect that we were going for with the wood. And then this is the South Plaza. So you'll notice that there's a south deck on this side. And again, you see the wood coming through. So changes to the EOC and the public safety building, there is an increase of 8% on the building growth, the emergency operating center, as well as we added a level of redundancy to these EOC generator. We went from 1,020, I'm sorry, from 1, 220 kilowatt to 2, 220 kilowatt generators. That is for the 72-hour required redundancy. So here's the most current rendering of the new EOC addition in front of the building. And here's one of the entrances. And then, so the changes to the sites. A recount of the tree, so the EIR was paired in 2017. Since then, there's been some just changes to the site. A recount of the trees was conducted and 16 new planted trees and six trees that were to be protected during construction are now dead. So we've included the new 16 planted trees and we've removed the six trees that have died since 2017. We've removed the removal of additional trees, including eight trees that were previously protected. We've increased in the vehicle trips due to the operations of a larger city hall. However, there's been 11% decrease because of the transportation demand management, the TDM reduction, which is based on the VTA guidelines. Just a couple of things to note, none of the protected redwood trees between the existing city hall and the city hall annex will be removed. Several of the mature trees are going to be transplanted rather than being removed. Protected trees that are removed will be replaced in accordance with the City of Sunnyvale Community Development Department Tree Replacement Standards. And overall, the number of trees on the new Civic Center campus will be greater following construction than prior to construction. Next slide, it's not go, there we go. So again, here it shows you all of the trees. We're keeping all of the redwoods that are going in on this redwood amphitheater. These are the ones that are between the existing city hall and the annex building. You'll see that those trees are back here, but this is just a nice view of what that amphitheater is going to look like. So from the findings, none of the potential environmental impacts of the revised phase one project will result in new environmental effects that were not previously evaluated in the EIR, nor will the changes substantially increase the severity of previously identified environmental effects. So we are recommending to the city council approve the changes to the Civic Center modernization, modernization project as described in the addendum to the Civic Center environmental impact report. That is what I have.
Thank you, Allison. Appreciate that. Are there any comments from Commissioners? I know I have a comment, but anybody else? Let me look at the hands. First one, John.
Yes, thank you very much. I want to explain, one, the reason that I asked for this to be addressed separately. Allison, you did a wonderful job explaining it all very nice and in a nice, neat, understandable way. Thank you. I would say that over the time period here, and I, and I assume that public would be able to call in to this portion of the meeting or do something, zoom in or whatever is the right term. So it's an additional public comment, too, of taking it off of the consent calendar. But I would like to say that here's three years of hard work that has really come together in a very nice fashion for the city. There was a lot of public input from both the planning commission hearings and the city council hearings and the outreach that went on. And I think that it's fair to say that these are relatively small tweaks to the, to the project, not substantial ones. And it's done in such a way that after three years, you're going to have, you're going to find some new things that you actually need to do. And it's good to do them now instead of after the buildings are built. So congratulations. And at the appropriate time, Vice Chair, I have a motion to make if it's appropriate.
Very good. And there's another Commissioner, Commissioner Weiss, you have a comment?
I have some questions.
Go for it.
Um, first of all, thank you, Allison, for your presentation. It was very clear. But I couldn't see on the drawings that you showed us where the 10% is to be added to city hall. It's not obvious to me.
That was kind of the intent. It's a total of about 10,000 square feet that's across four floors. So it really just stretched a little west is what happened.
Each of, each of the floors?
Correct. So overall, it went up, it went to the west, about 10,000 square feet over four floors. So it's.
It's 2,500, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, was there some, was there some discussion about the fact that in the future we might be working with more space between each, each staff person? They may have to be more spread out. That factor plus for it to follow what's going on now, there might be more telecommuting so that that alone would question whether 10,000 square feet is enough. Has that been a discussion?
I just want to clarify the question. Are you, are you asking, do we have enough space with this new COVID concerns? Okay. We believe we do. We also think that by the time this building, we are hopeful that by the time this building is open, there will be some hopefully a vaccine or something that will make it so that we're back to normal. That being said, we have looked at raising some cubicle walls, adding certain precautions, I'll guess they'll say, that will help us if, if this becomes the new, the new normal with partitions and different things. But we've, we haven't made any permanent decisions as of right now to respond to COVID-19.
Or unfortunately, other pandemics we may have. What about telecommuting? As you know, Facebook is saying now that looks like our future and other businesses are saying that.
So my response to that is we are, our immunity pull code, we, we respond to the public. It's a little hard for us to take care of you from my spare bedroom in South San Jose. So, you know, unfortunately, it's a little hard for us to serve a public being telecommuting 100% of the time. So we foresee that there is going to be a need for staff to return to work.
Okay, it just makes having a TDM that much harder if you don't have it. And my, my last question is because these are emergency generators that you're looking for, especially for public safety department and city hall. By that very nature, does that mean that they cannot be solar? Emergency generators have, have by definition to be diesel?
Yes and no. So the emergency generators at the EOC have to run separately, have to remain diesel. The same intent for city hall generators, but I want to specify that we do have backup batteries that will the building before that emergency generator kicks on. So we will be charging those batteries, the solar array ahead of, you know, so if it's just a PG&E eight hours down, the building will run completely off of its batteries and the solar power. There's also, it can run for longer if we shut off certain floors, you know, maybe the ones that have the one-stop shop or where the public needs to get to council chambers and so on and so forth. We can run the building longer off those batteries by strategically shutting down the building.
Great, thank you. You answered my questions.
Thank you. We have another question, a comment or question from Commissioner Olafson.
Thank you. I'm, when I saw that, you know, a year into the design, we're suddenly changing it. I got concerned. Some of these changes seem a little minor tweaking on the edges. But what concerned me, I thought I read that the completion date is now pushed out two years. And as a taxpayer, it seems like once a government project gets going and it gets stretched out and stretched out, the price rises with every, every year we delay the, the completion date. Where do we stand on that?
So we are, I believe, within a couple months of our original date. So this is still planning on going out for bid at the end of this year with construction starting the end of this year, beginning of next year. And we are looking to have the project complete by the end of 2022, which was always what was in the master plan.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Olafson, is there anything, anybody else? I'll just make my comments right now unless there's somebody. I don't see Commissioner Harrison, but Commissioner Harrison?
Thanks. I can't find the hand raised button.
Just speak up, just speak up if you can't find the button.
Okay, um, my question is similar on the 10%. So how was it determined that 10% increase in the building size would be appropriate? Well, I just don't have any background on that.
So it wasn't that we said, oh, 10% is the right number. We looked at the number of staff and it kind of worked out to be 10%. And so we went back through the staffing plan. So the original staffing plan that was done for the master plan was back in 2015 with a 3% growth. The city grew than that. So we reevaluated that in 2018. And then we looked at what the potential for staff growth was from that point. And it's settled out to be with new cubicles and all of that 10%.
Great, thank you very much. That was my only question. But Vice Chair Simons, I wanted to put your attention on oral communications. I don't think I heard that.
Oral communications, did I miss? Yes, I guess I did do that. Can staff zero away? We can just kind of add that in after this consent item, where moved, removed consent item, should I say?
You mean, you mean oral communications, not on this item, but in general?
Right, immediately after.
Do that after this, I suppose.
So we'll continue on. But thanks, thanks, Commissioner Harrison for mentioning that. Unless there's somebody else on the commission, John? Is it, is it just a motion? Because I have a comment.
Are you gonna, are you gonna ask for public comment?
I was going to. I was just wondering if there's any other Commissioners, and then I saw John's hand up. I wondered if he had more comments, but I think he has a motion, if that's correct. I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to ask a question or on the phone? Staff, you can alert me if there is.
So far, I don't see anyone. I don't see anyone who's raised their hand.
Okay, give them a few extra seconds here. I will close the public, open hearing on the, this topic for input from the public. And I'll just finish my, just one comment, comment that I was going to make was I think that it is interesting that we do have a couple of comments from the public referring to the pandemic. We have had a couple of comments by the Commissioners about how much can be incorporated in this time. I have a major concern with this because this is probably, this pandemic is probably one of the bigger, this maybe will probably be as large as the financial housing economic problems and not too long ago. And potentially much worse long-term. And so there is concerns of the finances for this project and but also just that maybe the design needs to be re-retweaked because of potential needs for social separation long-term. I'm not saying that this is going to stay forever, but it looks like we wouldn't want to design something that doesn't work in another that wouldn't work well enough. I just have one question for staff. That is if there is going to be some more tweaking, are they, would it be coming back for review? Or would it be considered for talking about modifying how the offices are going to be laid out or whatever? Is that so minor that wouldn't need to be brought back at all?
I'd say that's correct. I mean, if you want to help with the planning department layout and like to give feedback, we'd like more space. So if you want to make that motion as part of this, that'd be great. No, I don't, I don't think it'd be necessary unless there was something very specific to, from a planning commission item. It's, it wouldn't be something just in general of the interior design. It would need to be something planning related. And I don't, I don't see that we'd have something that would come up after this unless they were to change the design again.
Well, the only thing that I've noticed has been a big discussion, and it is a construction issue, is the air treatment is, is a topic that has kind of like been revolutionized, I think, potentially long-term. And I'm, I would recommend that maybe if we did make something that we just add in, that we have a review of that we have a review of the air treatment processes that are going to be used in the building. Because even after COVID-19, I think that people are going to be sensitive to that area. And I notice that's going to be changing for housing. And one of the things that people are adding in are more complete air treatment, not just cooling and heating. But that is something that is going to be potentially long-term. So I'm not going to make a motion, but I did see a hand up earlier. Commissioner Howe, did you want to make your motion?
Yes, Vice Chair, unless one of the other commissioners chooses to step in, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go for it.
There you go. In regards to agenda item number two A, I move that we forward the recommend, the planning commission's recommendation to the city council to approve the changes to the civic center monitors, monitorization project as described in the addendum. And I would like to speak to the motion if there is a second.
I second.
The both of you together, I'll give it to Commissioner Harrison. So you second it, right Commissioner?
I second.
Okay. Your motion has been seconded. Commissioner Howe, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, I do. And Andy, this is one of the times where I don't need any help in making the motion to give planning more space, because I'm not going to do that. I, I think that the project, and I was slightly involved early on, three years ago, in a panel of former mayors that spoke on it. And I think that the project is relatively small tweak to something that has really been well thought out. And it's a very much a good asset. Having been at the city hall a number of times during my lifetime. So I think it's something that the staff has thought through. And it's very appropriate to make these changes and that they're in fact, small changes and not requiring any additional environmental impact report in work. That's my motion and that's my speaking, thanks.
Commissioner Harrison, to your second.
I don't have anything to add. I agree with Commissioner Howe's comments.
Very good. Any other commissioners that would like to speak to this motion that we're about to vote on? I don't see any hands up. And if you can't turn it on, just speak up. I'm just gonna make one comment. I'll be supporting it. I am concerned, oh, what? Somebody, can I hear something? Okay. I'll be supporting the motion. I do have concerns about how the pandemic has maybe changed construction and what the impacts long-term are. I just have a recommendation. I didn't want it in the motion, but I already said it. But I think that one of the big things that is a big topic in architecture is air treatment. And I think that that would be a good thing for the team that's reviewing this project to put some time into reviewing. That doesn't seem like it would require much changes, but it could have a big impact if it was integrated into this particular plan long-term. So staff, or can you please record the vote?
Commissioner Ream?
I approve. I support this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Olafson?
Approve.
Vice Chair Simons?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
And Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and Chair Howard absent.
And Allison, when does this go to the city council?
This goes to city council July 14th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, staff. We're gonna go back to the future or into the future to the bat, anyway. Oral communications, I'd like to open that up. Are there any comments from the public? This was something that I sped past. Staff, are there any phone calls or Zoom comments?
Again, I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay.
Unless you want to give them a few moments.
I'll give them two or three moments, maybe. Okay, I will close the oral communications. And we're now back on track with our next public hearing item, which is, let me see, item number three, which is a application for a 0.82 acre site. And it is at 475 North Fair Oaks and 585 and 595 Columbia Avenue. Staff, do you have the report?
Hi, this is Cindy Hall, staff planner for this project. I just wanted to say hi to everyone and hope everyone's doing well.
Hey Cindy?
Chair, we can't hear.
Yeah, you're really, you're really, you're, you're a little bit better, but you're still very quiet.
Okay, I'll try to speak louder, sorry. So this project is an 18-unit subdivision on a 0.82 acre site. I can have the next slide, Bonnie?
You should have control Cindy.
The application request is for a rezone.
Chair, I can't hear at all.
Yeah, I, Cindy, you're, if we can kind of boost you, you're actually dropping off.
Really? One moment, let me just see if I can adjust my settings.
Okay.
You could also try calling in as well, Cindy?
Okay.
If that doesn't work.
Are you still there Cindy, or are you gonna phone again?
Yes, can you hear me now?
I'm gonna ask other people. I can hear her, but I can't speak for anybody else. I know that. Commissioner Harrison, you were?
It's not, it's not easy to hear you Cindy, you're very muted.
All right.
I'm gonna see if maybe we can have another planner give the presentation. And maybe Cindy, if you could maybe log off and log back in. Sean, are you able to at least do the presentation portion?
Yeah, again. Sean Mandrin in planning. As Cindy mentioned, it's an application for 18 townhouse units. It also includes a rezone to extend the PD zoning for two additional parcels, a parcel map and a special development permit. All right, Bonnie, did I end up with control?
Yeah, you should have control. There you go, you just did that, so you've got it.
All right. And this is the site outlined here in red. It's on the corner of Columbia Avenue and North Fair Oaks Avenue, located near Fair Oaks Park. This is the site plan. Mainly facing on Columbia Avenue with the smaller side facing Fair Oaks. Have a dual-use driveway and no access to car garages.
Sean, hold on one second. If I could ask that everybody who's not speaking, please mute their computer. Everybody on this call, please mute it so that only one person is coming through. Because there's a lot of backbeat.
So, yeah, can you hear me now?
So it's just as bad as before Cindy.
Okay.
Cindy, try muting your device. Let me see if that helps with background noise. Okay, so the only part of Cindy we could hear is the background noise. So Sean, if you could continue and I don't know, maybe Cindy, try again or call in or, yeah, something. Sorry about that.
I tried calling in.
Oh, yeah. It's the echo. Okay. And this is the proposed site plan, which I just went over. There's also four guest parking spaces located. Can you see my cursor if I move it over the PowerPoint? No, probably not. And
At this point, Sean, expect that we won't.
Okay.
Sean, is there somewhere you want me to point? I can, can you see the cursor moving here?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay. There we go. The project with the special development permit and the PD zoning is requesting free deviations as part of the project. The first is a rear, rear yard deviation, the required is 20 feet. They're requesting a deviation for the trash enclosure and for the residential buildings at 42 feet. Cindy might have to clarify that for me. And also the max distance between the trash enclosure and the residential unit. So the code requires 150 feet maximum. Proposed the furthest unit, which is up by Fair Oaks, is about 240 feet. The applicant had gone through some alternatives with site design. And ultimately, that made most sense to put the trash enclosure in the back corner to take it away from the street frontages. And that's kind of why that deviation ended up being 240 feet. And then also the minimum separation between buildings. It's supposed to be 26 feet and they're proposing 23 feet 8 inches. And so this site, this slide goes over the site plan layout, which has the original concept, which is the top here. And you can see originally, they had a driveway access off of North Fair Oaks and then also off of Columbia, which we kind of want to minimize how many access points we have on Fair Oaks. So with that reconfiguration, then we ended up with the revised concept. This is an older concept also that also looked at a trash enclosure with driveway access in the middle. But that didn't seem to make that much sense either. So the plan that's before you tonight is the one that ultimately staff saw was in support of. And that's this final concept, where we have the access point of the far west of the building or far west of the site with the common driveway to take you through to get access to the units. They're, I mean, it's again face Columbia and they also face the back rear wall here with pedestrian walkway to the front doors. And then again, the trash enclosure is located up in the top left corner. Sorry. The PowerPoint's really touchy or not touchy. Can you advance it one slide, Bonnie?
Sure.
Yeah. And these are the proposed elevations on Columbia Avenue. It's more of a modern contemporary. It includes the use of stucco wood, metal railings and metal awnings. Open space is provided on roof decks and balconies. And can you do the next slide, Bonnie? Thank you. And this is the elevation from Fair Oaks Avenue. Columbia Avenue is on the left here. On the left here. And they've worked on the elevations to provide architectural interest on the North Fair Oaks elevation since that is the side of the buildings. This slide also includes some materials that they're including with the project. Again, with wood siding, metal awnings, stucco with reveals and garage doors. Hard to read what that one is. And kind of modern exterior doors to just all kind of tie the look together. Okay, can you advance one more, Bonnie? All right. And I had one clarification, a couple of clarifications. One was just a clarification in the conditions of approval for the number of trees required. We just spelled that out as opposed as, and including the number of trees listed in the condition. For solid waste, we are looking, because the solid waste is located in the back of the site, we'll be getting a trash management plan as part of the conditions of approval. But we also just want the applicant to work with our solid waste provider just to make sure that we have ample clearance for the trucks backing out. So that might include coordinating with Public Works or additional curb striping for that type of thing. But we'll kind of finalize that at building permit. And I think that was it. With that, staff is recommending, we included four alternatives in the staff report that was provided to the planning commission. Staff is recommending alternative one, which is to recommend that the city council make the required findings and approve the rezone, special development permit, investing tentative map, subject to the findings in attachment four and conditions of approval on attachment five. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Actually, really quickly, Chair, Chair Simons, I just want to say first of all, thank you Sean on the last minute for doing that, that was great. Cindy appears to be back on. So Cindy, just say something pithy that we know whether you're working or not.
I am here.
Okay, so Cindy's available, but you need to turn off your, mute the other device so you don't have the echo that goes on. And just to let you know, oh, it's in the staff report. I don't remember if John mentioned it, but we do have, and now Bonnie, you need to mute. We do have a rezone on this property, but the only, it's really more of a, of a change in mapping. It doesn't change anything for the project. It's, I think it's two of the sites are zoned with the PD, one isn't, or it's the other way around. This is just to put one, the residential, the PD on all properties. That's really more of a, of a technicality, but because of that, it does go to the city council on, for the actual hearing. So with that, we're open for any questions you have and hopefully Cindy can help us with those.
Dave, you're muted. I see.
Now we can't hear Dave, so it's your turn, Dave.
I got muted somehow. Oh, here I was, if you were a lip reader, you would have heard me say, Commissioner Weiss, it's your opportunity to speak.
Thank you. A few questions. And thank you for that spur of the moment presentation. Sean, I noticed from the plan, there in the middle of the landscape area in the rear, which would be the eastern edge, there's stamped concrete. Is, is that like a play area or a barbie? What is the stamped concrete for in that bottom, in that eastern end?
Hi, this is Cindy.
Cindy, the technology is working against you tonight. It's not your night, is it?
I want to cry.
It's not your fault. We've, we've been doing with this all night long, so.
Just join the club.
Yeah, I don't, it seems like you have two devices that are having the audio on and you can only have one, otherwise you get that backbeat. having the audio on and you can only have one, otherwise you get that backbeat.
Okay.
Yeah Cindy, I'm in, I see that you're an attendee twice, so I'm going to disconnect you from there and I think that might help.
Okay.
Bonnie has a lot of power.
Should I go on to another question meanwhile?
Cindy, say something.
You want to try speaking now and see if that helps?
I'm looking at page A dash 1.1. And if you look at the far eastern side in the middle and it says landscape and then it has a symbol for stamped concrete, that's the page you're looking at. A dash 1.1.
Cindy, you want to give it another try?
Sure, can you hear me now?
That's much better.
Yes, yes.
Great. Okay, just to kind of quickly clarify, thank you Sean very much for jumping in and presenting. To your question, Commissioner Weiss, that decorative paving on the east end of the project is actually just kind of like a decorative paving at the end. Just to provide like a terminus at the end of that driveway. Hopefully that answers your question.
So it doesn't really have a purpose. It's just there. Um, on the property, there's a very large tree that's on the corner of Fair Oaks and Columbia. And it looks from the diagram as though it could be kept and incorporated into the landscape. But I can't tell if that's part of the landscape plan. I would hope, I would hope that that magnificent tree could be saved.
There is only one tree that they are preserving on the site and it is a street tree, but it's on the northeast end of the site. For the other trees that are throughout the site, they are in conflict with improvements and they are proposed for removal.
Because the one on the southeast corner looks as though it would it would fit into that landscape area. I don't see. They could move the driveway, I think around. I think it could be worked in, but, and I just want to put it out there that it would be great if either the driveway could go around it or it becomes part of the landscape on the southwest corner. Be a shame to take the tree down. What is the metal railing? What kind of metal is it? I have some concerns because sometimes these give way. It just says metal.
So if we could refer back to the details, the architectural detail sheet. Material should be listed in terms of, are you interested in knowing if it's a powder coated?
No, I'm interested in what kind of metal it is because and they should be really durable. And strong.
Typically either wrought iron or steel.
Then what are they?
We can have the applicant clarify, but I believe it's one of the two, more than likely steel.
Okay, yeah. And then in the color renderings of this, I noticed there was some green, almost an olive green, which is a very welcome addition. We don't usually see that in our color palette. But yet, when I looked at page A dash 3.1 where all the paint colors are listed, it says that that color is bone, number four. Um, so I'm hoping it's going to be green, but I don't see that in the non-materials for the paints. And that would be on A 3 dot 1.
A, A, 3.
A, 3 dot 1. It seems to me that the words and the colors are switched between number eight and number nine.
Sonora Hills and Bone. Yeah, it looks, I think Commissioner Harrison, you're absolutely right. Eight, nine are switched.
Okay. So good, there's going to be some green in it. It's a very, very nice relief. Every unit has a roof deck, correct?
Yes, every unit will have a roof deck.
And, and the each unit is going to have its AC on that roof deck, it looks like.
Yes.
So it's going to be, I hope, a very silent unit or a quiet operating unit?
Yes, there was a noise study that was prepared for this project in which it analyzed the AC, what type of noise generation and whether it complies with our operational noise standards. And it's been demonstrated that it will comply.
Okay, and each unit will also have a small private rear yard?
There are no rear yards. Their usable open space is basically provided by the roof decks. They do also have at the ground level, a small gathering space that also can be used for recreational purposes, but they don't have private rear yards.
Okay, that would be, oh, I see. The ones on to the rear and at the far right. Okay, um, thank you then. Answers my questions for now. Appreciate that.
Thanks Commissioner Weiss. Any other questions? I'm searching, searching, searching. I have a question for staff. In the, in the project data table, it mentions that this is, this is a neighborhood that had, with this PD, you have a three-story max and the proposed project is three stories. But I'm looking at the plans and it looks like it's a four-story building. Right? Is the, what are those, those like, there's like the roof deck and then there's actually, is that like the stair pods or something that are on the roof for people to?
Correct. That is, that is a penthouse. It's the stairway.
So it's a four-story?
Well, we do allow for projections above the height limit such as penthouses.
Well, you usually would count that as a story. I don't understand why there's a minimum of, or a maximum of three stories regardless of the height. And you're adding in this, whether it be called a penthouse or what I was kind of almost thinking is might have been staircase that's covered or whatever, but. Staff?
Commissioner Simons, the, the buildings are three stories. The code does allow for mechanical associated items to extend up. And that would be just those enclosures for these stairs coming up to the roof decks.
So they're not, they're not penthouses per se.
It's a stair penthouse, if you want to call it that, like an elevator.
Yeah, they call it a doghouse. It's where the stairs.
So it is just a stair enclosure?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if there was more to them and, but still, it just somehow it's kind of on the edge of whether, you know, if I saw this years ago, I would have said this, you know, especially with the roofing decks and people putting awnings. This is kind of like fourth floor livable space kind of thing, even though it's the open space. The other thing I wanted to ask you about was on A 4 dot 4, it shows the individual elements of like windows, doors and garage doors and things like that. Number six shows a window where the mullions are gray or white and the exterior molding is dark brown or, you know, really dark. Is this all going to be matching or are we going to have some windows in different places that have different? The, the window mullions are not going to be matching the molding.
The window styles should be consistent and the mullions should all be consistent as well.
So just to make sure, is it okay if we, do you think that'd be comfortable to have the put that as a condition of approval? I just, when I see something in the diagrams that doesn't match what we're expecting, I want to make sure that that gets done. Is that a problem staff? I'm seeing Andy.
Staff wouldn't have an issue, but we can certainly check with the applicant.
Yeah, I think that needs to be touched base with. And the other thing is that my concern with a three, four, okay, three-story building, I'll give you a three-story building. That I'd like to see the landscaping match the height of the buildings and what I'm concerned with, with, I don't want to get in the selection of trees, but what I'm thinking about is putting, requesting that we match the heights and kind of maximize the height of the trees for shade and also just the building scale. Is staff having a, would staff have a problem with that?
Staff would be amenable to amendment to the condition. I believe this came up during the study session and our applicants did take a look. In terms of the tree selection, they tried to accommodate trees that would accomplish that height, but additionally staff did recommend a condition of approval that six trees be upsized or that they provide 30, 24 inch box trees just to comply with our tree replacement standards. So that would still be in line with staff's recommendation.
Cool beans. So that'll, I'll mention that whoever makes the motion, I'll be, expect, expect that I'll be making a request for whoever makes the motion. And the last thing is it's staff, is staff in agreement that that tree on the southwest corner cannot be saved because of intrusion of the construction?
So you know, that driveway, because we've looked carefully at that driveway. On, I guess on the west edge of that driveway, we did incorporate a small landscaping buffer. I'm not sure if it's adequate enough to, you know, maintain that tree or plant a larger tree in that corner. We can certainly take a look at that.
Okay, maybe we can make a request also. And I, there are more questions, I was kind of surprised. Okay, I thought I was.
Commissioner Simons, I think you didn't see Commissioner Harrison's hand was up. And then I don't know if Cindy, you want to be able to also respond to the questions we received from Commissioner Olafson earlier this evening. Commissioner Olafson, would you like to still get those responses? We can do that.
Okay, I only see Commissioner Rehm with his hands up. I don't see anybody else's, but if there's somebody else to speak up. If I can just go through the list, I'll go with Commissioner Rehm.
I'm going to be real quick because my connection is horrible. So Cindy, I feel for you. I'm just, yeah, I say, I say we try to save that tree as much as we can in the corner of Columbia and Fair Oaks. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Olafson, you had comments that you had shared with staff. Did you want to speak to those comments or do you want staff to read your, your comments?
You're muted Commissioner.
You don't have to speak, Ken, if you don't want to, but you can come back if you're having any problem connecting, you're turning on.
I was holding down the spacebar, but apparently the spacebar was the one that was malfunctioning.
Okay.
Most of the questions, I had three comments and they were of a minor technical correction to the presentation. It doesn't need to take up any more time. I think the staff has incorporated those comments into the report.
Thank you very much Commissioner Olafson. And.
I have a question.
Okay, sure. Go for it Commissioner Harrison.
Basically, it was really just a comment for staff about the trash truck path, travel path. It looks like it works, but it looks like it's within centimeters of the curb. I don't know if you have any comment about that.
Basically, if I could just take a few moments just to kind of go over that, that requested deviation a little bit further. Basically, we went through several iterations of the site plan. As Sean presented, we had the original concept, which was two buildings. One building had 10 units and the building in the front had eight units. Public Works had requested that driveway off Fair Oaks to be removed and by removing that driveway, they were no longer able to have the individual cart service. So the trash truck wouldn't be able to enter and exit the site. It required them to modify their site plan to provide this three-point turnaround. The second revised concept that they submitted with the trash enclosure being kind of up front near the entry driveway was not an ideal condition either because if you notice the parking spaces at the very end, the west end, they had a dead end condition. So if those four parking spaces were occupied, a car could not turn around and come out. So that was not an ideal condition. Also, with having the trash enclosure so close up at that, that intersection, it would just create a bottleneck. Cars could not come in or out of the site. So after working through several iterations and studies, we've came up with a final concept that would allow for the trash to actually work, but it did require some deviations. Mainly the rear setback because it's three feet from the rear property line, but also the second factor was that it would be more than 150 feet away for eight units. So the other thing is they do show a template showing the trash truck negotiating the site. Staff also agrees with Sue Harrison. It is a very tight and that's why more than likely the trash truck would have to back out. Backing out is, you know, it's not preferred, but we do have instances where trash trucks do, you know, back out of the site, especially with our older developments. Hopefully that answers your questions.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask this question of the applicant also, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity to respond. The drawings, the renderings show that the trees are quite high. Sort of in this, between the buildings and at the far west edge, but I don't know which species those trees are. And I just wanted to ask, is, are those realistic renderings that show how tall those trees will get relative to the buildings? Or is that a question for the applicant?
I'll probably have to defer to the landscape architect.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I could open up the, unless there's another commissioner, which I don't see. I'm going to open up to the public hearing and I'll ask the applicant to give their first presentation. You will have 10 minutes.
Robert, can you hear now? I know you were having some difficulties earlier.
Yeah, I think I'm connected just fine. Can you guys hear me okay?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, we can. Okay, I'm going to share the presentation with you now.
By the way, Chair Simons, the YouTube link is now working in case there's any interest.
Thank you much.
Great.
Okay, Rob, you have control. As soon as you start speaking, I'll start your 10 minutes and I'll give you warnings at five minutes, one minute and 30 seconds.
Okay, okay. Sounds great. Thank you. Yeah, first I just want to thank city staff for working with us over the, you know, better part of the last two years here on different versions of this, this project, specifically Cindy, Ernie and Sean and Norin for all your help and, and helping us through this process. Also want to recognize and provide positive feedback for the format that the city of Sunnyvale has. It's the only city we've worked in to date where we've been given the opportunity to do a study session prior to a formal hearing, which I think really helped over the course of these last six months since our study session steer the project in the right direction. So thankful for that. And yeah, really excited to and proud to share the final product and. in the right direction. So thankful for that. And yeah, really excited to and proud to share the final product and and to share with you all.
Very good. Thank you, Robert. Are there any questions of the applicant?
We actually do have multiple slides, but Bonnie, unfortunately, I don't think I'm able to flip through. Bonnie, if you don't mind, maybe I'll just, I'll just give you a few and.
It was the long pause that made me think you were actually kind of being taking, not taking your time.
I can do that for you. You want the next slide?
That would be great. Thank you, Bonnie.
No problem.
Yeah, so you know, I get to speak tonight and represent our small firm, but I did want to recognize, you know, our team members that helped get the project to this point. You know, we're a small local firm in Los Altos. Since our inception in 2013, we've done primarily single-family homes around the Bay Area. And this is the first time we've had the opportunity to do a project in Sunnyvale, so really excited for that opportunity. Bonnie, if you don't mind. Awesome. With that said, we, we do have, we were lucky enough to bring on a group of, you know, really experienced and well-versed professionals who have a lot of past experience, not just in the city of Sunnyvale, but also designing a lot of high-quality townhome projects around the Bay Area and are very familiar with, with the city of Sunnyvale and and the regulations and the staff. So I think a lot of the credit certainly goes to them for where we are right now in the project. Bonnie, you can move on to the next slide here. So I did, this is kind of just a brief overview. Hopefully it's not too small for you guys to read. As far as just kind of the different iterations and evolution of this project. It actually started when we just had and were in contract on two parcels. And it started as a single-family home project is kind of how we envisioned it. The owners of the neighboring 585 Columbia piece approached us in about four months after we got into contract. And we were lucky enough to, to work with the Buddhist monastery to to get that parcel as well to create a, I think, a more substantial and hopefully a more beneficial project to the city as well. Since then, we've worked, you know, hand in hand with staff. We had our study session back in November of last year. And since then, I've had about, you know, seven months or so to work to try to incorporate staff feedback. The public feedback that we did receive and of course also your, your feedback, commissioners feedback over these last seven months. And I'll touch on some of that in the next, next slide here. If you don't mind, Bonnie. Awesome. Thank you. So, yeah, there was some, and I actually, I might use this opportunity just to talk about some of the the two points that were brought up during the, during the Q and A session. The penthouse window was a portion of the discussion as during the study session, and it was brought to our attention that it kind of looked like a gunner's pit, to say it, to say it bluntly, is kind of the way that it was presented. So we, we worked with staff and we worked with our architect to come up with an architectural detail to give the perception that the windows are connected between the two units. And I'll, I'll point that out as we're going through the video presentation portion a little bit later. The significance of the sized trees, that also did get brought up during the, during the study session. And I think I can speak, I can let Greg Lewis speak to how we've gone about upsizing the trees since that point and also what we've done to modify the species of trees to try to best accommodate that, that comment. I will also take this opportunity to talk about the, the tree that's being removed on the corner there. The biggest reason in my understanding for the removal is actually that it's in the vision triangle as a part of the new development and it being a fairly substantial tree was proposed to be removed. Right now, I think we would propose a three-foot height fence there and also some low, kind of lower landscape. So my understanding is that that, that is the reasoning, but I'll, I'll certainly defer to to staff and the landscape architect on that one to comment further. As far as the, one feedback that we did get is a blocky design, kind of sharp angles. We worked to kind of soften that with additional siding. Providing architectural samples, you know, unfortunately, due to circumstances, we're not able to, to physically touch and feel the samples. I mean, I am glad you guys caught the, thank you. I am glad that you guys caught the swap between Sonora Hills and Bones. Certainly that's just a, was a typo there. So thank you for that. We got the feedback of bio retention areas, trying to incorporate them such that they're not, you know, mud pits, that they actually have a landscape significance. So we worked with our landscape architect for that. We did refine the color palette as well. I think there were a little bit more bold colors than we previously had. And also, we also received a comment to ensure that we're using modern and high-quality architectural finishes, considering the, you know, overall design of these, of these townhomes. We worked really closely with Ernie and Housing on the relocation of the four rental units that are currently there. So that was another real, real area focus here over the last seven months. We worked with solid waste and we're still working with them. Thank you for touching on that during the staff portion. Yeah, we are working really closely with them to make sure that both their satisfactions are met from a, from a driver's standpoint and also that the, of course, public safety takes precedent over, over anything else. So making sure that we adequately address any, any concern there. Curb appeal, we did a lot of landscaping revisions and also added some, some decorative concrete at the, at the front and also worked on our walkways as well, which I'll point out in in a video walkthrough here in a second. Created a bit more of a sense of place for the common area for, for the eventual owners of these houses. Acoustical preservation at the roof decks, worked to specify a really efficient HVAC system and AC condensing unit that has a very minimal decal rating and actually also proposing a curtain over the top if, if that decal rating gets too high, but it's a variable, variable speed unit that is, that is very, very efficient and meets that requirement. And lastly, the curb cuts was, I think we discussed as far as when it generates, and that was it. Awesome. So one thing, so this is a video presentation. It's usually kind of the more fun portion of the, of the video. But you can see here that we did add additional siding elements. We also from the last revision, did a wraparound wood window at the corner to kind of emphasize the corner elements and bring attention to, to that size. We, we softened the facade by mixing materials, by doing trellises that extend over to the corners as well, as you can see. And we also, you know, did some fairly substantial additional siding work also and kind of variation between the units to, you can see we, we created bookends on either side of these units as well, using the architectural feature, which Cindy worked really closely with us on. And hopefully we were able to see some of the thickness of materials and and the width of the roof cap and also the depth of trim that we're proposing to use as well to create some, some articulation there as well. Awesome. And then we have one more video, which I'll share, which is more to, if you actually go to the next slide, awesome, thank you, which is more at the, the ground level. Purpose of this video is to show what it would look like if you're, if you were walking on the sidewalk here. And hopefully gives a little bit of a, a sense of what the finished product will be. I will note that, you know, some of the landscaping elements and, and, and other things, certainly I would look towards the plans. It's kind of the bible for, for all of the approvals, but certainly we wanted to use this as a visual representation to, to show what, what the eventual project would look like. And yeah, we, we were able to implement, the railings are all metal railings that are the painted black. So certainly, and it'll meet the structural engineer's requirements and designed to satisfy you know, the live load that we put on, on those in case of leaning or anything else. So we'll be sure to, of course, address that as a part of the building submission.
Your time has ended.
You'll, by the way, you, you will also have another 10 minutes after public comments that you can.
Okay, perfect. That actually, that pretty much wrapped it up right there. So that was, that was perfect.
Fantastic. Even with my interruption, thinking you were going to be the first, first applicant not to absorb the whole, the whole time. Anyway. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
I'll go from the top to bottom. So Carol, Commissioner Weiss, you'll be the first.
Thank you. I assume that the staff actually performed the vision triangle test, that it wasn't that an assumption that the tree needs to be removed because I was parked on that corner this afternoon and I didn't have a problem, but I didn't get out and do measurements or anything more specific.
As, as far as what we show on our plan, it's essentially a 40 by 40 triangle that's shown at the corner there. But Cindy, I'll let you speak to any, any other specifics, specificities that the, that the city has as a requirement.
So let me go back to the tree disposition plan. On that sheet, it does denote whether, I guess the reason and the condition of the tree.
Cindy, can you try speaking a little louder, please?
Sure.
Still hard to hear, but if you speak up, it might help.
Just to see, because usually there's on the planet denotes the reason why that it's being removed. So for this particular tree.
Commissioner Simon, can you mute, please? Can you mute, Commissioner Simon?
So are you, am I again unable to be heard?
No, I'm sorry. We were asking someone else to mute, but you're okay, Cindy. Please continue.
Okay, all right. So although it's, I guess more than likely it's in conflict with underground utilities and that is why the tree needs to be removed.
Okay, so, so far we've gotten a couple of reasons. I would hope that we could get a definitive answer as to whether it's vision triangle or conflict with underground utilities or something else. Mike, you might be able to answer the next question, Cindy. There's been no mention of any BMR units.
Certainly I can answer that question for you. So they are subject to provide two affordable units. These two affordable units also comply with SB 330 in terms of replacement units for loss of rental, rental units. So they are complying with our requirements.
Okay, and could you specify that requirement? What, what will that be?
So it's 12 and a half percent of the total units, which basically it's two units and they're playing the infractional loop for the fractional unit, sorry. The loop fee for the fractional unit.
Great. I like having that in the record. Could the applicant now specify more particularly what the metal is in the railing that will be sufficient to hold the load?
Yeah, ultimately, so it will be, it'll be a steel product that'll be point welded to a requirement that's determined by the structural engineer. Ultimately, there's usually an embedment detail that they show that we have to comply to. So in addition to having a steel requirement, there's also essentially embedment detail into, into the, into the structure of the deck itself as well, which will need to be followed. So sufficient backing to make sure that the anchors of the, the steel railing that are being installed also meet the requirement.
Is there any wood involved at all?
Not in the railing, no.
In the deck?
No, there's not.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Harrison, didn't you, was that who was asking to speak?
Well, maybe. I have two questions. Could the landscape architect address the representation of the very tall trees and what species those are? And is that realistic? Because they look very, very tall. That's my first question. My second question has to do with the cement board. I'm not really familiar with cement board that looks like wood. Can somebody speak to what that really is? Is it tracks? Is it some others? I'm just not familiar with cement board looking that color or like wood.
Yeah, I can. So I'll take the, the second comment on first in regards to the cement board. It's a more durable product than, you know, a cedar or redwood and requires less maintenance over a given time. There's a few different manufacturers. James Hardy and Morale are probably the two most common of the siding options that could be used. I think in the physical sample that we provided to the city was a morale sample. So it's a cement fibrous product that actually has grains that replicate wood. And the application for providing is actually you can stain it similar to as you would a wood to create some sort of variations that you'd see in a, in a cedar or redwood. As for the, the height of the trees, just in case Greg is facing any issues, our landscape architect, I will open up the landscape plans right now and see if I can take a stab at the mature height of those trees along the frontage, which I think are going to be shown on the, on sheet L1. I will take a quick look.
Hello, this is Greg Lewis.
Oh, there we go. Greg, perfect.
I'm not, I'm watching this thing on Zoom and I'm not seeing my picture or anything as a participant, but I'm hearing you. The trees along Columbia Avenue, there's 10 Ginkgo trees, Ginkgo fairmont. And I use as a source for how high the trees get and how fast they grow. I use a website called Select Tree that's out of Cal Poly Urban Land Institute. And according to them, Ginkgo fairmont grows 50 to 75 feet high and 12 to 25 feet wide. And it grows 24 to 36 inches per year. Now, if you look up Ginkgo in the Western Garden Book, Ginkgo, just in general, they have a slower growth rate. But this website, Select Tree out of Cal Poly has, they have different types of Ginkgo trees and they give different heights and widths and growth rates as required. So there's 10 of those along Columbia Avenue, along with the street trees that are on the plan. Those are smaller trees. Those are crepe myrtles there and they'll probably get 18 to 20 feet high. So you've got a total of, along Columbia Avenue, you've got a total of 10 Ginkgos plus six street trees. And then between the units, the, the tree with the big circle, that's a Chinese pistash. And those can easily get up to 30, 35 feet tall. And those are being used also as shading for the parking areas. On North Fair Oaks, there are two Ginkgo street tree, or there's two Ginkgo street trees. And also, well, actually, there's three Ginkgo street trees on North Fair Oaks, along with tree 2T that's being preserved and saved. And also there are two crepe myrtles on each side of the small patio area. I think there was a question earlier, what is that paving on the east side of the, the units? And that's a small common area patio with some benches. That was another landscape question that came up. Also, another landscape question that came up was what's happening in the southwest corner? Actually, we can't save a tree there because that's where the irrigation water and backflow preventer come in. And so there's really no room for, to save an existing tree right there. Do you have any other landscape questions?
Thank you for your answers. And Robert, thank you for your answers about the cement board. That's very impressive.
That's very impressive that it can be stained.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Commissioner Rehm. Unmute. Can you hear us, Ken?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, now.
Andy, I think it's a streaming service that's really messing this call up, but that's my opinion. So thank you for your presentation. I thank you for the videos as well. So a question came up when I saw the videos. On the drawings, it looks like the windows are brown. But in the videos, it looks like they're either white or an almond color. So what what color are you proposing to use for the windows?
They'll be dark bronze.
Dark bron- bronze?
Correct. Yeah, close as close, very close to black.
Okay, okay, so it's it's because in in your video, it looks like an almond color. So but it's it's close to black. Okay, good.
Correct.
Next question is, are you are you guys the current owners of this property? Or once this gets entitlement, it will be your property?
We are not the current owner right now. There's one current owner who owns the property at four nine or four seven five North Fair Oaks and five nine five. And then the Buddhist monastery has the residences for the monks at five eight five Columbia.
So are you taking ownership after this entitlement? Or are you guys developing it?
Correct, yeah, it's not tied to the entitlement process, but a separate timeline that runs in parallel.
Okay, are you guys looking to actually do the building? Are you?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're both the developer and the builder.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Rehm. Is there anybody else? I don't see any other hands up. I do have a question for the applicant, which is that not only, I hate to be a stickler, but I want to make sure this is done. Commissioner Rehm mentioned about the window moldings. I also saw that in the moving animation that some of the molding around the garage door looked a little of the almonds light gray and around some of the doors. Are those all intended to be the the bronze dark color from the molding all the way in?
Correct.
That's it, because just to make sure, since there's a bunch of images of the wrong thing, we're probably, I would probably want to make sure that that's a condition of approval to make sure that that gets followed through. And that's it. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public staff? Can you help me on that one?
Yes, nothing that we've received on staff side. And just looking at the attendee list, no one has raised their hand at the moment.
Okay. So let's close that, the public public hearing and bring back the applicant. Just wanted to share with you, you have ten more minutes. But you are not obligated to use it. So do you have any other further comments for the commissioner?
Yeah, nothing, nothing very pertinent. The only thing that I will mention is the tree that's on the corner there. If we're able to work with our arborist and and save it, and we are certainly willing to do that. There is a note on the landscape plans that does denote that nothing over three feet should be in the vision triangle. So assuming we are able to satisfy that requirement, the applicant has no problem in trying to preserve that tree, assuming that the the health of that tree is deemed to be in a a healthy condition.
Thank you very much. So are there any? Thank you very much. I'm going to close the public hearing on that unless there's some other questions of the applicants. But since we just asked a bunch of questions of the applicant, I'm kind of thinking there won't be any. Thank you so much. We'll close the public comments and
Vice Chair, I see Commissioner Harrison raising her hand.
Oh, I do not see that.
In her video.
Okay, Commissioner Harrison.
I would make a motion if you're ready.
I'm ready. Yes, go for it.
I move alternative two, which is approve the the project with the change that or the specification that the windows will be the dark brown or black color as opposed to the almond color. And the other conditions of approval, other extra conditions of approval.
Right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rehm, to your first, Commissioner Harrison.
Um, I I think the applicant has done a very good job at responding to our comments in the study session. I'm glad that you thought that was useful feedback. I appreciate the homeownership opportunities. The BMR units. I appreciate in the presentation, both the videos and the drone views that you showed, you know, what the neighbors would see, what the project would see of the neighbors. I don't have a problem with the deviation for the distance between buildings. That is something that we do very frequently. I don't have a concern about the deviation for the trash enclosure. Seems to be the best solution for considering the site. And I don't have a concern about the height deviation because of the penthouses for the stairwells. All in all, I think it looks great. It provides a definitely increase in our homeownership opportunities. We get a lot of apartment buildings. We get less homeownership opportunities. I I think it's a very good addition to the city.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rehm.
Yeah, to the makeup of the motion, I'd like to see, I'd like to propose if we could try to save that tree on the corner of Fair Oaks and Columbia, if the applicant can work with staff on possibilities of saving that tree.
Accepted.
Thanks. I will be supporting this motion. As and I too, as Commissioner Harrison said, I appreciate that the applicant has taken into consideration the feedback that we gave during our study session. I think this looks like a better project. You know, I think the only, the, I like the fact that they they went modern and they carried that out through throughout the project in terms of the garage doors and the front doors. I'm glad that you 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 created more of a presence on Fair Oaks with those two frontal units. You know, one thing I think Commissioner Weiss mentioned at the beginning was there's a space behind at the very back end of the property that's just, it's empty space and there's nothing. Doesn't seem like there's, it's, we're doing anything with that with that space. And I don't see how what we could do with it right now, but I'm just kind of noticing on other projects where I think we there's, maybe in some of these bigger projects, I'm going to start to look more closely at some of these little corner, you know, open spaces and how we can make more use of those. But I'm talking, we're talking about this project and with this, I I find that it 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 meets all of our requirements. I can make the findings and I hope my fellow commissioners can support this as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Rome. Commissioner Olafson.
Thank you. I can, I will be supporting the project. I can make the Sequa findings that it is consistent with our general plan. I can make the findings for the special development permit. And I can't find anything in the investing tentative map that would preclude us from approving this. I will make note that upon something that Commissioner Harrison said, the Hardy board that the applicant referred to has been used. I used that in Florida. It's a, it's a very durable, long-lasting material. It comes in colors and it can be painted. The only issue is if there's any settling of the of the structure itself, concrete boards don't don't twist very well. But other than that, it looks like a great project and I'm pleased to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Chair. In response, I will be supporting the project. Although it is the largest in the immediate neighborhood, my drove around. The immediate neighborhood has a lot of really old structures and lots that are empty or abandoned. And it looks as though this is an area that is soon to be redeveloped, updated in many ways. So this project may be the vanguard of approving the whole area. And I I think it's a very good example. In response to Commissioner Rehm's concern, the landscape architect did say that that stamps stamp concrete space in the landscape area at the far eastern end, they would be having some table and seating there. So some use will be made of it. I can make the findings. Normally, I would be concerned about the deviations, but it does make sense in this situation. So I ask my fellow commissioners to also approve the project. Looks like a really good one for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands up in the air. If you can't bring it up, just speak and interrupt me. I'm going to go on to my comments and I have a request for the maker of the motion to clarify, to be clarification. Do you also include in your dark window molding and the millions also the entry doors and the garage door moldings?
Yes, but it seemed to me that those are pretty clearly delineated in the materials board as being dark. It's just the windows were not.
It's, yeah, but I also saw it in other images. So, yes, so I just wanted that, is that okay with the second?
Yes.
The other thing that I'm going to make a friendly amendment request is that we require that the applicant maximize the size of the tree selection to be native species appropriate for the placement. This goes along with staff's recommendation for upsizing six trees.
I accept as long as the applicant can do it.
Oh, well, I don't think that's, this is appropriate for this, for the placement is is the, but maximizing. That was the motion, so I don't think that's.
Accepted.
Accepted, okay. And also for the part of the motion, which is working with the say, trying to save the tree on the southwest corner, that staff work with the applicant if there's any underground utility issues to put effort into mitigating that problem that might cause a tree removal as well as if it's a vision triangle issue and it's requiring some trimming to trim it up, that that be done rather than removal.
I accept.
Me too.
Okay, so that's done. I will be supporting this motion also. I think that I really do appreciate the applicant incorporating much, much of the architectural concerns that the planning commission had at the study session. I do notice those changes and I really appreciate it. I don't know how to to say that. It's it's one thing when we've gone through a study session and and it does, you know, we're we're basically a good majority of the planning commission doesn't, is not happy potentially with the architecture or the consistency of it. So I really appreciate that. And I think this will work out to be a very, very good project. So I will be supporting, I can make the findings. And I have no problems with any of the rezoning or the tentative map and yada, yada, yada. So that's it. So staff, are we ready for doing the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Rehm.
I support the motion.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Olafson.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Vice Chair Simons.
Yes.
And Commissioner Harrison.
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and Chair Howard absent.
Thank you very much.
And so, Simons, this is, just so you know, the, this item will go to the City Council for their hearing on July twenty eighth for the final decision.
Because it is a rezoning.
Exactly, so the entire project goes to them.
That makes sense. So now I'm grabbing my agenda again. And we are on to item number four, which is a recommendation of the council to adopt a resolution establishing a vehicle miles traveled as VMT as the threshold of significance for analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Adopt a council policy for transportation impact analysis and find the action is exempt from SEQA. Do we have a staff report?
Okay, Amber, it's all yours.
Um, Bonnie, is, are Dennis and Karen in here yet?
Let me check the participants list here.
I don't see Dennis, but I do see Karen.
Okay, I think he'll be here in a sec. We were chatting on the side. I'm just going to wait for them, Commissioner Simons.
Okay.
I see Dennis.
Okay, great.
And Karen.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, commissioners. As you know, my name is Amber Blazinski and I will be starting the presentation on our transition from level of service to vehicle miles travel. My colleagues from Public Works, Dennis Ng and Karen Mack will also be participating in the presentation. Dennis is the manager of the Traffic and Transportation Division and Karen Mack is our VMT specialist. Will you go to the next slide, Bonnie?
Sure, let me get you started.
Sorry, I don't. Okay. We know you've all watched the study session that we did for the council in April, and some of you participated in earlier public engagement that we did back in two thousand nineteen. For those reasons, we're going to focus our discussion tonight on the big picture, how over the last eighteen months, we developed the city's VMT policy and what staff is recommending in the graph policy. My colleagues from Public Works, Dennis Ng. Echo.
Okay, I muted.
Could everybody mute?
I muted Karen. It should be okay now.
Okay, great. Just a few reminders that the city's transition from level of service to vehicle miles traveled as our SEQA threshold of significance is a requirement. Oh, no, this is right. I'm hearing an echo still. Is everyone muted?
I put Karen back on mute, so I think it should be okay now.
Okay, okay.
Unless she wanted to say something. Okay.
So as our SEQA threshold of significance is a requirement from the state that began under some SB seven forty-three, and cities must use VMT to analyze transportation impacts on development projects for all projects, except those that were already far enough along in the SEQA process after July first, two thousand twenty. Our policy formation began with developing a work plan, which included coordination with neighboring cities and agencies, introducing the public to the concept of VMT and the required SEQA changes, technical research and coordination to understand VMT and attend and attendance at webinars and discussions with other agencies, formulating a policy that aligns with Sunnyvale's goals while also meeting the state's goals, and discussing VMT with other jurisdictions to learn about what others are proposing. Next slide, please. Thanks. It's important to point out that VTA actually planned, played a major key role in this transition from level of service to VMT. This included formation of a task force that met monthly for the last eighteen months. And the task force allowed all of the jurisdictions in the county to pool resources and and really gave cities an outlet to share ideas. Additionally, through contributions by each city, VTA hired Fair and Peers to create heat maps for the county and develop the countywide VMT evaluation model that can be used to test development projects. And VTA also submitted a letter of support to the city today, which I believe has been passed along to all of you. Next slide, please. This is just to show kind of our public outreach and engagement process that we went through. We held our first council study session back in October of last year. We created a VMT website with information. We had a community outreach meeting back in December of We had a community outreach meeting back in December of last year. We then went back to the council for a study session in April. We were planning to come to the planning commission also, but when we all ended up sheltering in place, we didn't really have a good plan for that at the time. So we made it to the council. We asked you to watch that presentation. We appreciate that you did. And now we're here tonight at our planning commission adoption hearing. Next slide, please. The technical evaluation for creating the VMT policy really began with understanding how VMT affects plan development in Sunnyvale and how it aligns with the general plan and the climate action plan. Staff then evaluated the technical advisory that was published by the state's office of planning and research, which provided guidance to jurisdiction in the establishments of the baseline thresholds and also recommended exemptions. City staff also researched current information on VMT, attended VMT webinars and continue to coordinate with other cities, VTA and OPR to vet our policy ideas and recommendations. Next slide, please. The VMT policy process was really a joint effort that included many city departments with CDD and DPW taking the lead. Additionally, as mentioned, staff also coordinated frequently with other agencies outside of the city to discuss VMT. And then in April, we held our second council study session to specifically discuss, you know, kind of what we were, we were thinking we were going to be recommending to you tonight and solicit feedback on those recommendations. Next slide, please. So, oh, sorry. You can just put it all on the, on there. Yeah, sorry. Okay, great. In summary, the draft policy recommends VMT as the city's threshold of significance for CEQA. Countywide VMT as a baseline for residential unemployment projects. A 15% reduction from the baseline as the threshold. Specific project exemptions similar to those recommended in the state's technical advisory document. VMT requirements for transportation projects and policies for the city's local transportation analysis needed to meet CMP requirements and continue to measure and monitor our transportation network for operational deficiencies. Next slide, please. Aligned with the state's recommendations from the technical advisory, staff is recommending that certain developments should be exempt from VMT analysis with the presumption of less than significant impacts if they meet criteria that is typically shown to reduce VMT. The recommended exemptions include developments within a half mile radius of transit stops with 15 minute frequency during peak hours. And I'm going to talk more about that item on the next slide. Small infill projects, those are projects with 110 daily trips or less. Local serving retail of 100,000 square foot or less. City facilities, affordable housing of at least 25% affordability as further described in the policy and residential and office R and D projects that are screened out by the VMT heat maps. Next slide, please. So to dive in a little bit more on the transit exemption, the state recommended that lead agencies generally should presume that certain projects proposed within a half mile of an existing major transit stop or an existing stop along a high quality transit corridor will have a less than significant impact on VMT. In addition to proximity to transit, this exemption is predicated on the assumption that the proposed development is the type that would reduce driving alone. This would be facilitated by projects that propose at least the following. 75% FAR for office and R and D, 35 dwelling units per acre for residential, support or promote multimodal transportation, do not propose excessive parking and are transit oriented in design. Next slide, please. Consistent with the state's recommendation of exemptions for transit supportive projects, this map illustrates the mint green buffer showing land within a half mile of these existing major transit stops or high quality transit corridors. In addition, the blue lines represent the specific plan areas that we have adopted in Sunnyvale. And you, you really start to see that most of Sunnyvale's plan development is already within these exemption areas. So, so we're already doing what we're supposed to be doing and planning our development near transit. And so this just brings that further into the VMT conversation. Next slide, please. So in summary, Sunnyvale's VMT policy as proposed, it meets the state's goals. It meets the city's general plan goals and aligns with our general plan. And it also maintains and enhances our transportation network. And next slide. Oops, sorry. In addition, the city will continue to conform to CMP requirements, which Dennis will talk about in a little bit, and utilize level of service to identify operational deficiencies. Okay, so there's a lot of info on this slide. I really just want to boil it down to the, the key point of having this slide. And this was also a request kind of from, from the council asking us to really evaluate, is the countywide average the best selection? And so really, in order for us to decide on our recommendation of that countywide baseline, we needed to develop a policy that would align best with implementing our general plan. And the other options for the baseline are the regional baseline. That one is a nine, nine barrier counties with us being the furthest south and the citywide baseline, which only takes into consideration the number of people who live in Sunnyvale, the number of people who work in Sunnyvale. And we know that not everybody lives and works in the same city. So this contract just kind of further evaluates that. So you'll see at the VMT level, you can see the countywide average falls between the citywide and the regional average. So it, the regional average is the easiest to, to meet. The citywide average is the most difficult. The countywide falls in between. In terms of evaluation of alignment with the general plan, we, in reviewing specific project examples, which we'll get into in a minute, we found that using the citywide average, it favors residential projects in areas with good transit and, and really aligns with the development that is, is shown at the capacity in the general plan. Using the countywide average, good land use, oh, I'm sorry, using the countywide average. Using the citywide average, you can still, you, you can still build in most of the areas, but it actually creates a lot of mitigation requirements for projects that are within the, within areas where we've planned for residential growth. So that can, can cause a hindrance to projects if they, if they can't pencil out all the mitigation that would be involved or the, or the environmental review. And in the regional average, it's higher than the countywide average, meaning that it's, it just makes it easier to put housing wherever. And it may put, may allow housing to go in areas where we, we don't really anticipate a lot of our growth. The third row really evaluates the ease in building out the multimodal transportation network. The countywide average, it really allows for project sharing, cost sharing within the county for multimodal improvements. And it's similar to how things are done now because VTA helps us with how we do some of our mitigation. The citywide average, you know, it, it falls on Sunnyvale to, to do a lot of the improvements. It could be very costly to the city. And on a regional side, we may be paying into improvements that don't even directly benefit Sunnyvale because we're incorporated into this regional average with counties that are, are pretty far away from us. And then just thinking about the availability of mitigation for projects to meet the VMT threshold. You know, in the countywide threshold, the VMT is met, sorry, in the countywide example, the VMT threshold is met by placing projects near transit, you know, building out our general plan. For the citywide threshold, again, it's so low that it could stop development from occurring in areas where we, we planned for residential growth. And the regional average, you know, is just a little bit, a little bit easier to put development wherever. It could allow development to go in areas where we hadn't necessarily planned for growth. So that's the residential side. And then the next slide, we'll, we'll go through the, the employment side. So it's, it's similar in terms of what we've evaluated. And, and again, it'll, it really shows, I think, a picture of where the countywide average really aligns best with our general plan. The, the, the transportation network and discussion is the same. And then the VMT mitigation is different from the previous slide because in this instance, the citywide average is the highest. So that would allow, could potentially allow some development to go in areas where we hadn't planned for new office uses with little or no mitigation. And then on the regional side, it's, it's even more difficult to put office in, in our planned growth areas. And I want to invite Karen. Oh, yeah, I want to invite Karen to add anything. She's been, really been our VMT specialist. And so I just want to invite her to, to add any thoughts.
I think you did a great job that I think that you summed it up well.
Okay, great. Thanks, Karen. And then one more slide for me, Bonnie, and then I'll switch over to Dennis. So then just to recap, what we are recommending in our policy is the countywide average baseline. Again, because it aligns best with our general plan. It's consistent with current coordination programs and it's within local control. And then we're also recommending the 15% as the threshold, the reduction threshold. And that is because it promotes the goals consistent with the climate action plan, Sunnyvale's general plan, and it appears to be consistent with other jurisdictions in the county and also aligns with the state's recommendation. That's what the state has recommended. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Dennis now to do the other half of the presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. So what I'm going to talk to you about is analysis that we ran for VMT. The, and then one that is proposed. Next slide, please. So the first project is a redevelopment of the Calstone Building Materials site to a residential mixed use site. This is located within the Lawrence Station area and is proposed, well, it's, it was approved for 741 residential units with 15,000, 1500 square feet of office, 1500 square feet of retail. And based on the proposed policy and the state's recommendation, would be exempt due to its proximity to the Lawrence Caltrain Station. Under this, under this scenario, we're going to analyze VMT just to show you what it would look like and under difference, under different baselines and under different thresholds. So what you see before you is the citywide baseline and which shows that the current VMT is, would be 10.34 vehicle miles traveled within the city. And adding on the 15% threshold would require a reduction of the, of the, of a project, well, would require the project to meet a VMT of 8.79. And then looking specifically at the site, it currently has a VMT of 9.73 vehicle miles traveled. And then we overlay the project on there and then it's remains at 9.73. So under the citywide scenario, we would be requiring mitigation. And then under this analysis, we had to implement four different required mitigations. And then under the countywide scenario with a 15% threshold, the, the existing VMT would need, well, the project would need to meet a VMT of 11.33 vehicle miles traveled. And then the site, as noted before, was, has an existing VMT of 9.73. And then with the project, it current, it would still meet the countywide threshold with the 15% threshold. So as you could see, using, using this, using the countywide threshold and a 15 countywide baseline with a 15% threshold, the project would meet it already. Next slide, please. The next project that we looked at was the 1 AMD site. So this is a redevelopment of the AMD corporate headquarters to 1,051 residential units, including 944 apartments and then 45 of which were very low income and 107 were townhomes with 13 below market. So this project with the city's general plan and include affordable housing for a high quality transit. So we would need to analyze it. And then, so we analyzed it under four different, well, two different, two different baselines, citywide and countywide, except under countywide, we added in different threshold levels, just so that you could see what would happen if the threshold was increased, requiring a larger reduction in VMT. So under the citywide with a 15% threshold, the existing VMT at the project's site is 11.9, 11.09. And then simply adding in the project of, of housing brought the VMT down without, to 9.49. So this is before any mitigation. So that doesn't meet the 15% threshold of 8.79. So we applied mitigation measures and we found that after applying eight mitigation measures, it didn't successfully reduce the VMT or the project site to meet the 8.79. So, and then under the countywide baseline, which starts off at 13.33 and then applying 15%, 16%, 25% reductions. It lowered the threshold down to 11.30. And then looking at the site, once again, the existing VMT is 11.09. And then with the project at 9.98, under, without any mitigation, the project was successful in meeting the required VMT. So next slide, please. So the final project that we analyzed was one that hasn't been approved yet. So this is the proposed 300 South Matilda Office Project. This is located on, off of Matilda between Iowa and McKinley. And it's 160,000 square foot, six story office building with 8,732 square feet retail. And with, it's within the downtown specific plan. So the project is near the Sunnyvale Downtown Caltrain Station. And then as a result, it would be eligible due to its proximity for the exemption based on the state and proposed city policy. But we, once again, we analyzed it just to show what the VMT impacts would, the VMT analysis would show under different scenarios. So under this analysis, we looked at countywide baseline, but then applied three different thresholds to it. 15% reduction, a 16.8% reduction and a 25% reduction. So at this site, what you would see is that without the project, it starts off at 15.64 vehicle miles traveled. And then by placing the project on the site as proposed, it reduces the VMT to 14.68. So it's approximately a one, a one VMT reduction just with the project. So, but based on that, the project would require mitigation under all three scenarios. So we started adding in mitigation measures. And as you could see, as the reduction, as a threshold increased, the amount of mitigation required also increased, with the most being under the 25% reduction and requiring a combination of physical mitigations, offsite mitigations, so sidewalks, traffic calming, bicycle facilities, and then some TDM reductions, parking cash out, telecommunicating, telecommuting and then subsidized transit. So the important thing to take away from this is that just with the placement of the project in proximity to residential and mixed use, it will lower VMT by adding density and diversity of land uses. it will lower VMT by adding density and diversity of land uses to this, to the area. Next slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. An important thing to note is that with the VMT and the legislation SB 743 did not change requirements for the congestion management program. So the city is still required to maintain conformance with CMP guidelines that VTA establishes. And that means conducting level of service analysis for major intersections that are regionally significant. And then mitigating those improvements, mitigating those impacts if identified with intersection improvements or through development of a deficiency plan. So CMP conformance is no longer tied to CEQA based on the state mandating something using a different metrics other than LOS. Next slide, please. So we are still proposing that a local transportation analysis be conducted also. This will ensure that intersections and roadways are safe and efficient for all users. And it'll be a smaller study than what people are used to seeing, but we'll still use level of service. There will be operational analysis at various intersections at project access points and major circulation sites. We're going to look at traffic signal timing and phasing for efficiency improvements. Queuing, so we're going to look at left turn storage at intersections, major intersections. And then we're also going to take into consideration pedestrian, bicycle and transit delays and level of service. So, and then for residential neighborhoods nearby projects, we're going to look at traffic calming to make sure there is no impacts to existing residences. And then as also, as also as part of our operational analysis, we're going to look at technology upgrades for our transportation system. Next slide, please. And then what we also wanted to show you with this slide is what other cities are doing with their VMT policies. So we looked at some major, major agencies and then some agencies within Santa Clara County. And then to give you a cross section, the big thing to take away is that almost all the agencies are still measuring LOS in some form or manner. And then the majority have selected 15% as a threshold for their analysis. But what you'll see is that there are some varying selections of the baseline. So some agencies have chosen regional, some have chosen citywide and some have chosen countywide. What I point to you is that some of our neighbors, Santa Clara, is looking at countywide for both residential unemployment at a 15% threshold. Next slide. And then finally, before you, you have for your consideration, three options recommending the city council to establish VMT as a, as a city's significance threshold for CEQA. And creating a local transportation analysis policy. An option to create the policy with modifications. And then finally, do not adopt the policy and provide direction to staff. Staff is recommending that the commissioner staff recommend the council to establish VMT as a city's significance threshold for CEQA and create a local transportation analysis policy. So with that is the end of our presentation and we're available for any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Dennis. Are there any questions from the planning commission of staff?
I have a question.
Go for it, Commissioner Harrison.
I, I understand your thinking and how you came to countywide. Because bottom line is it aligns best with our general plan. And it's workable. It's not either, it's the Goldilocks standard. It's not too hard. It's not too easy. I'm really, I can sort of understand why San Francisco and Oakland chose a regional basis. Just based on the thinking that they are like regional centers. What I'm having a hard time with, and maybe you know, and maybe you don't know, why would Los Altos and San Jose choose citywide when it's, for us anyway, harder to accomplish, takes more money, more, you know, more city money? And certainly Los Altos is not like an area within itself, right? Not everybody who lives in Los Altos works in Los Altos or Mountain View either, you know? Mountain View, I mean, have you got any insight as to why other people chose other things?
Sir, yeah, I'm actually going to ask Karen to talk a little bit about that because she actually worked on the San Jose policy. So she's the pro.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. So in San Jose, their general plan, the original adoption was, we are a jobs first city. That was the quote. What that meant is they have a really, a really unhealthy jobs housing balance. It's 70% housing for 30% jobs. Fiscally, one of the general plan goals was to kind of hold the line on housing and really try to push the jobs. So they knew when they were adopting the citywide threshold that they would be making it more difficult for, for residential projects. Because in fact, they had converted so much of their industrial lands to residential in the years past. So they were hoping that they would kind of slow down the residential development and encourage the jobs. I don't know what Los Altos did, but I, that is what I know from San Jose.
Yeah, I think I'll add too, I, I don't know Los Altos VMT, you know, baselines off the top of my head, what they look like. But it could be for similar reasons. It could be that they don't believe they can meet, you know, they, they'd be able to, to implement their general plan if they used, you know, if they use their citywide average. I'm not sure. We didn't, we haven't had a lot of discussion with Los Altos in our VTA meetings, so. Yeah, I'm unsure of those. It, it makes sense for San Francisco and Oakland, definitely. They're in the middle of all of those. I think if we felt like we were more in the middle of those, the regional areas, maybe we would have considered that as our choice. I think it's easy to rule out citywide because you know that not everybody lives and works in the city. So we felt like the countywide was, was more aligned with our goals.
Any insight into Mountain View?
You know, we've talked a lot with Mountain View about this. At first, they actually were thinking about using countywide too. I, I'm not sure what changed. I think their planning commission meeting, I think there was some, or I'm sorry, one of their study sessions kind of pushed towards a different alternative. But I know from my discussions with their staff, I know they were considering countywide for a while, so I'm not really, I'm not sure. Maybe it may also have to do with, you know, what their maps look like. Actually, their heat maps looked worse than ours. On an employment side, and maybe they just felt like if they used that, they couldn't, they weren't going to be able to build anything.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, let me see if there's anybody else with any questions or comments for the staff. I see none. Oh, no, go ahead, Commissioner Harrison.
Oops, I found another one. How does a project promote multi, multimodal? How does a project promote multimodal? By providing bike racks, by having duck outs and curbs? Those are the things I can think of, but maybe.
Yes. Yeah. So other things would be connection, finishing connections in bike lanes or paying fair share towards, you know, creation of bike infrastructure or other pedestrian infrastructure. Dennis, do you want to add anything to that?
Projects could also work with VTA to do transit improvements and then act stops nearby.
And improve existing stops. We hear that from VTA a lot.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. I have a question unless somebody else wants to join in. For staff, whoever wants to handle this, one of the things I noticed with using the citywide analysis rather than the county, that one of the mitigation factors seemed to pop up the most for mitigation was unbundling the parking. Why is, why was there, is that a cost? I don't think that's a cost to the city to doing that as a unbundling a parking as a cost to the city. Can you explain what you're, what, you know? You might be, you know, maybe it's a not, but.
Sir, yeah, so I just want to say that, you know, the mitigation items that were listed in the project examples, those aren't, those aren't necessarily items that we would consider to be valid mitigation. We may have our own items that we think are valid mitigation. Those are actually items that are built into the tool, the estimation tool that you can select to improve your VMT. They have been tested. They have been shown to decrease VMT. I will let Karen talk a little bit more about the unbundling, but I know that that's unpopular in Sunnyvale. So I just, you know, want to, want to make sure I say that it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to, we have to let somebody do that. But I'll talk, I'll let Karen talk a little bit more about that.
Sure.
So I think just to reiterate what Amber just said, the tool only includes mitigation measures that reduce VMT that have substantial evidence that proves that, that VMT can be reduced. So that's what the tool has, but a city has the option of picking and choosing what mitigations really work for them, for, for land use in Sunnyvale or any other city. The unbundling of parking is something that a site, a residential site, the developer would have to, again, your, each unit you buy doesn't necessarily come for, with a parking spot. Or maybe it comes with one instead of two. And then the money is that you would, if you wanted a parking spot, you would, you would pay extra either in your rent or your ownership to have a parking spot. So that's what that cost is. It set no cost to the city. It's the residents.
Right. The only thing that I think that people don't really, I mean, that's something, I know it was commented by Amber that it's an unpopular thing in Sunnyvale. I don't know why it would be just because it actually also lowers the cost of housing. So one of the most expensive elements in any ownership or rental is car parking. Whether they pay for it directly or not.
And maybe that will, that's changed, but back in 2014, when I took the multifamily TDM project forward. The, one of the main reasons that the, our like technical advisory wasn't, you know, adopted by the council was because that's, that was one of the recommended items in it. So I don't know, maybe feelings have changed at this point.
Well, it's not like expensive housing is kind of an issue around here, but you know, call me kind of weird to bring that up as a, as a proponent of, of lower cost housing in the city.
Yeah. So that's why I said it. I just wanted to explain why I said it.
No, no, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. It's kind of from Amber. Thank you. Um, let me get back to my list. I, I apologize all night. I've been opening a list and closing it. Otherwise Amber is a white box around her head. So.
That's okay. You don't need to see me.
So nobody else has made any comment to, staff, do we, as a recommendation, do we, do we actually have a formal vote to recommend or make changes or whatever? Or do we, we do?
Yeah.
So if there's no other questions of staff, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Did we open up the?
Share, I think you want to open the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Sorry.
Boy, we jumped on that one. Listen to us.
I don't think there's going to be any.
Yeah, keep your toes. So let's open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? Staff will give them a little bit of time. No?
I think that's a no.
I think that's a no. So.
We tried.
I, I tried, I tried to cut him off is what you were trying to say. So let's close the public hearing. And Commissioner Harrison, you, you said you wanted to make the motion?
Yes, I move alternative one. Recommend adopt a resolution establishing VMT as the threshold of significance for CEQA. Establish the countywide VMT average for both residential unemployment as the baseline with a VMT reduction threshold of 15%. Approve VMT exemptions for projects as detailed in the policy. And adopt a local transportation analysis requirement, which includes LOS analysis to meet the CMP requirements as well as other transportation operations evaluation.
You had to say that in one breath, I tell you. Then is there a second? Hello? Okay.
I second.
Okay, Commissioner Weiss, I was thinking, yeah, this is really an unpopular motion here. Okay, Commissioner Weiss, so Commissioner Harrison, to your, to your motion.
I think the staff has done a very thorough job of evaluating it all. And thank you, you know, I guess a number of times over, I've been to many, many of these meetings about this. And I think I finally understand it with this presentation. And the chart that said, okay, well, this is the pros of this adoption measure and this is the cons. I can really see it now. So I know that we have to, I know we have to adopt VMT. I know, you know, it seems like 15% is the recommended number. I understand the staff's reasoning for wanting to do an LOS evaluation. You know, continuing that because we're not really sure how this VMT is going to work and this gives us the comparison tool. And I definitely understand now, I mean, I can see us as a countywide entity as opposed to a regional entity. And the numbers seem to work out best for that. So I think the staff's done a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. Commissioner Weiss, to your second.
I agree with all of the reasons Commissioner Harrison set forth. In addition, I would say there, it seems attainable for us in light of our climate action plan, in light of the state goals, in light of what we want to accomplish in terms of residential and commercial projects that it's doable. And I really want to thank the staff for making this understandable. They've done a great job. Even I understand it. So thank you very much.
Are there any other, oh, Ken Olafson, Commissioner Olafson.
Thank you. I do appreciate all the work that went into this for the staff. I can't support changing to VMT and I will not be voting for it. I see this as just another incremental issue to take more and more power away from Sunnyvale. And, and what's becoming called regionalism. It's not what our neighborhoods want. It's what the region wants. And as we get into this one Bay Area vote later this year, we, we are, we have even less authority to manage our own city. VTA can change their standard and we're stuck. With all of that, I will be abstaining from voting on this. A no vote would, I would think would denigrate what the staff has done. I just can't support it. Thank you.
I, I, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Olafson. I don't think any vote one way or another is going to be taken as an. I don't think any vote one way or another is going to be taken as a negative on staff. I think you've been very explicit on that one. Thank you, Commissioner Olafson. Any other comments? I'm going to make my comments. I'm not going to be supporting it either, but for the opposite reason. I think that when I reviewed using the city method rather than the county method, one of the things that was listed was unbundling parking. And not only does it lower the cost of housing in, in a city, which is, I don't know, kind of a, a good thing. And secondly, it actually does reduce the VMT. I think that there are tools in our tool chest that we haven't had and we have not been looking at. And if switching to the city model and method would help the city design and plan better, I would be all for it. So anyway, with that, unless there's any other comments, I'm going to ask the staff to call the vote.
Chair Simons?
No.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryu?
You know, I haven't heard half of the report because my connection's gone down, so I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay. Commissioner Olafson?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion does not pass. We have three yeses, one no, two abstentions, and one absence.
In that sense, I would, staff, what do you want us to do at this point?
Well, our.
Commissioner Simons, if you were to add language that said you'd like to consider unbundled parking in the, in some of this work, would that give you the more comfort to support it?
So the motion you're saying is keeping the same motion using the regional.
That countywide.
But, yeah, no, I'm sorry, the countywide. But including as, as a a particular mitigation solution, we would include unbundling parking. And that's what you're into our tool chest. Is that what you're saying? Is that, are we even discussing the tool chest? It sounds like we're just.
No.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think this, I don't think this works.
Well, the only reason I suggest that, it seemed as though, as though you weren't necessarily against a lot of what was, the motion was, but that you are concerned that the unbundled parking wasn't included, unless I misunderstood you. And if that's.
I think, well, what I was reading was, I kind of saw more benefits for using the city method and that was, and less for the the county. So.
Could I ask a quick question, Dave? So in the citywide, you mean on the residential?
On the residential side. I noticed that it's the opposite, yeah, with the, with the business.
So I just, you know, just the plea, and then also we're going to council next Tuesday. So, so we have to go one way or the other, you know, because time is of the essence. But I guess, you know, we really looked at some of these project examples and it's really hard, once you put in the 15% reduction threshold, it's really hard to build residential in the city. And that's a use that we're really hoping to get more of. And when you look at the heat maps and the attachments, I actually did, I don't want to take credit, George, helped me do the heat maps for each of the three scenarios. And you really see the difference in how many more areas turn orange and red, which are hard to mitigate with that map. And so it just means a lot of extra or additional work for residential developers versus using the countywide average to hopefully promote the type of use that we need in the city. So that's my plea, I guess.
If, if I could add something to that, the unbundled parking is one of several parking strategies included as mitigation. It is still an option for countywide in areas that need mitigation. We just happened to pick a project that was within the, the buffered transit area. So the, so, but unbundled parking will, is an effective mitigation measure anywhere in the city, even for areas that are higher with that county baseline.
And Dave, one of the things we could, or Commissioner Simons, one of the things we could include in the recommendation is, is a recommendation that the council does allow residential developers to propose unbundled parking to help further reduce their VMT. That's something that could, that could go into the recommendation that then goes to council, that so they see that from you.
Okay, I'm going to, can I ask that we, what is it? Let me see, I'm trying to think. Informal consent. I have a question for the other three. For those, for those who supported the first motion, would you lose your, would it lose the support to recommend the addition of this unbundled park recommendation, which is not really part of whether we're using city, regional, or county selection of data?
For my part, no. It would not change my vote.
John?
Yeah, it would change my vote. I'd vote no.
Ah, well, we're in a, we're kind of, we're, we are not on. We're not consolidating onto one thing.
Chair Simons, this is Rebecca. I had my hand raised, but I don't know if you saw it. So I just wanted to address Commissioner Ryu, if he's, if he can hear me. He said he missed part of the presentation because of technical issues. But this is a legislative item. It's not a, it's not a land use item where we have to worry about due process of applicants or, or members of the public. And so, you know, I think that if the commissioner heard enough of the presentation and read the materials, he could still participate if that was his choice.
Well, let's talk, we're kind of in the informal period, Commissioner Ryu, do you have any thoughts, comments? Or maybe you're moving in a particular.
Just to make a recommendation to the city, I will support the motion.
Okay, so.
I'm kind of tired of this right now, to be honest.
Okay, then I'll want to end the motion heard informal discussion. And I would like to just make the original motion with the addition that unbundled parking be a consideration for residential mitigation to the city council.
But Dave, if you did that, you're, I don't think you have a vote one way or the other. I don't.
Oh, we've got Commissioner Ryu. So.
I'll go with the majority vote. I'll go.
So we'll get, we'll get four. Unless we lose, you know, something, you know, Commissioner Harrison, the last moment. Is there a second?
Could you restate the motion or whoever made the motion?
It's the first motion with the, which was accept county statistics to be used. Is that right? Or, I don't necessarily know what the right term would be. The countywide measurements, baseline, as in the first motion. But that an addition to residential mitigation would be unbundled parking in the city of Sunnyvale. Is that, does it need to be a little bit more defined?
It helps us and hopefully it helps those who are voting.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
I have no more comments. Do you have a comment to your second? Nope. Anybody else? I asked for the staff to redo the vote.
Okay, Commissioner Ryu? Okay, it looks like he's back. I'll ask him again. Commissioner Ryu?
Well, I don't know, I don't even know what the motion is because I dropped again. So.
Oh, no.
Or is it another?
Is the original motion with?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Weiss?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Oh.
Commissioner Olafson?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Simons?
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses, one no, one abstention, and one absent.
Thank you very much, staff. I really appreciate the staff recording. I too really, really liked how that was very understandable. I guess that's, the bad news is maybe that we're implying that other analysis is not as understandable. I don't know. So anyway.
We appreciate it.
So anyway, we're now off from our public hearing. And we, I believe, staff, we're at the standing items, consideration of potential study issues.
That is correct. And also, by the way, I don't know if we mentioned it, the last item, the VMT issue is going to the city council on next Tuesday, the 30th. And yes, this item now up is for any study issues. We haven't received anything from anybody at this.
Very good. Non-agenda items and comments. Commissioner Collins, anybody who? Yes, Commissioner Howe?
Thank you. I just, clarification, earlier it was stated that Chair Howard was absent and I believe it's an excused absent, is it?
I believe it is.
Thank you.
Yes, it was.
I just wish, we all just, I would just say for everybody, wish him a speedy recovery from whatever he has caught. Any other commissioner comments? And I thank Commissioner Howe for that addition of clarification.
I have a, I have a question, a comment, Dave. Can somebody teach me how to raise my hand on this screen, on the computer?
So, yes, Commissioner Harrison, I know Bonnie's reached out to you before, but I'd say, take her up on her suggestion to, to help you and she'll be able to, we've been talking offline about that, that she wants to be able to help you so you don't have to hold your hand up for a while, but that'll show on your screen.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm going to move on to staff comments.
All right. Well, a couple of things, we, I think I told you about our outdoor dining policy that we've kind of came up with in a real fast way. And it's pretty cool what we've been able to do. The city council will consider that tomorrow night to adopt a resolution to confirm that, to have an emergency order to allow that. So they don't have to do a use permit. They don't have to go through the whole process to be able to have outdoor eating. So some of these restaurants could begin serving again and they, there's some criteria they have to meet. And basically, you know, I had to meet ADA requirements and fire code and those sorts of things. But hopefully that'll help the businesses in the area. Also tomorrow night will be the final consideration of the, the extension of permits for during this time. So people give the businesses and the applicants a little bit longer to establish their use or building or whatever there is, or they got a permit for. And then I just want to say congratulations to Commissioner Howard, who isn't here. Chair Howard, who isn't able to be here, and also to Commissioner Howe and saying congratulations. I'm glad you're going to be around for a few more years. So thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. It's a really tough next item of the meeting, which is adjournment. So thank you, everybody.
You know, I think Commissioner Howe has his hand raised.
Oh, I couldn't see it. I have to scroll constantly to go see the high upper, lower part. Commissioner Howe, please speak.
You can't tell if your hand is raised or not raised. And I keep jogging back and forth. But David, you did a nice job tonight. Thank you.
That's very sweet of you. I appreciate that. So anyway, and with that, I would just say the meeting's over. And anybody who needs help with Zoom, please contact staff and get, you know, get questions answered. So that's it.
If we could.
Thanks, everybody.
If we could pull our money together and buy Commissioner Ryu's a new internet provider, I think we should consider that.